To order, nice to see so many faces tonight. Please note attendance Denise and join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have quite a few items on our consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just one item of discussion, I wondered if...
Oh, sorry David.
That's alright, the effective date for Marilyn Annan's resignation is April 8th, is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so...
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda passes, thank you. Sorry about that David. Student reps, Courtney Elijah.
So, I'm Elijah Nielsen and I will be giving this month's sports report to, and fall, or not fall, sorry, winter sports, basketball. So at Gill, the girls varsity took sixth place and the boys varsity took first, winning state at the OSAA 5A state championships. Now we start spring sports with baseball. We have 42 players currently participating for all three levels. Our young men had a great offseason on preseason leading up to March to prepare for the spring. Our offseason workouts were well attended and we saw some great strength gains as well as heightened sense urgency for the growth in the program. We have a group of five seniors who will each play a major role for our varsity squad. We also have a very strong sophomore class in terms of numbers and talent. We will start three sophomores at the varsity level with another five or six starting for the JV team. Our freshman team had a solid core of players who I expect to see growth and development from over the course of the spring. As a program, this will be the first time we will support two separate teams during the summer season. Both teams will participate in Oregon Junior State and will compete for the opportunity to play in a state tournament at the end of the summer. I look forward to a solid four months of baseball and to anticipate major strides by our players over the course of the spring and summer seasons. Now, boys tennis. We currently have two athletes, 22 athletes participating on the boys tennis team. We have a very strong sophomore class and our seniors are doing a great job of leading the team. Our record is three wins and one loss. Next match is on the 14th against Central and that's away. Girls tennis, the Lady Foxes are currently undefeated with two wins. Next match is also on the 14th against Central at home. Softball, so far the girls have a record of three and six. Their next game is also on the 14th at Dallas. Track and field, two meets down so far and the next meet is on the 15th at Central. It's a big Central meet. And then golf, along with the other spring sports, the season is underway and then also for your professional golf fans, a congrats to Jordan Spieth on his first major title at Augusta, the 2015 Masters. That concludes my report.
So I'm Courtney Roth and I have the clubs report for this month. So ASB led by Johnny Farrow is preparing for the Mr. SHS pageant and for spring week. Mr. SHS is a riveting competition between eight senior boys to determine the foxyest man alive. More importantly, all of the proceeds from this event go directly to Medical Teams International to help many people in need. The show is this Thursday at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. We invite you all to come and enjoy the entertainment, choose this year's Mr. SHS and raise money for a great cause. The theater run by Doug Osterhout has just finished the casting for the spring one act plays and are working very hard to prepare for their performances. The four one act plays are Check Please, Faculty Meeting, Early Frost and The Chair Play. The shows are May 7th, 8th and 9th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. FFA run by Scott Towery and Sarah MacArthur hosted the state convention at our very own high school over spring break and it was a huge success. There were around 3,000 in attendance at the convention and there were tons of great events. In the competition, we had three state champions, Holly Kinsey in Creed speaking, LeAnn Kinsey in Sophomore Public speaking, and Janelle Kinsey in National Chapter Application. We also had 10 students receive their state FFA degrees. Next FFA will be preparing to host Food for America. The choir led by Jennifer Kircher competed at the district competition recently and qualified for the state competition, which will take place in May. The band led by Frank Petrick also competed at districts, taking first place. They'll be heading to the state competition in May as well. Also, after a lot of hard work to fundraise, the band was able to purchase marching band uniforms to compete in. And that's all I have for the clubs for this month.
Very good. Any questions for these guys? I just have a comment that down at, when I was down at the state championship basketball game, that the boys won, I just wanted to give kudos to the kids of our high school because after the game, one of the, one of the guys who was working there, one of the ushers or whatever you call them at Gill Coliseum, came up, I was talking to him afterwards and he commented about how what a great job our student body did, all our students in the stands and the fans, and how respectful they were of everybody down there and he said it was, he said you guys were the best of any of the schools there. So I just wanted to share that and give you guys kudos. I thought that was pretty cool.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations to Sultan High School.
Yeah, very nice.
Thank you for your report, you guys.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I thank you for that question David about Mrs. Annan's resignation. We did receive an updated resignation letter this afternoon with April 13th dated on it. So consent agenda should be corrected from April 8th to April 13th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you do that Denise? Thank you. Okay, I'd like to open it up for our first audience with visitors. As always, try to keep your comments to five minutes or under. They gave me a new gizmo here tonight, so I'm going, I have my timer up here. When it gets to four minutes, I will hopefully press the right button and the yellow light will come on.
Green light.
Green light?
Green light.
Okay, green light, then the yellow light will start at 30 seconds, I think. I don't know, we kind of were going over this. I missed the tutorial, so. But anyway, so instead of me trying to get your attention, just, you know, when you see the light come on, that gives you your clue. And if there's, if there's groups of people here who want to say, you know, have the same thing to say, please have one or two spokespersons so we don't, not repeating ourselves to give everybody else a chance to talk. Okay, would anyone like to address the board? Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. We had Lydia Peters, is she here? She requested some time, so she can start. Sorry about that Lydia.
Thanks for having me.
And also when you come up, please sign in and your name and address and then tell us your name and address and we'll let you get going.
Okay, so I'm Lydia Peters. I live on Silver Falls Highway, south of town, much further south of town. I was hoping that I could, well actually first let me say, I'm a product of Silver Falls School Board, or School District, and so is my husband. I went to elementary school at Silver Crest and my husband went to elementary school at Victor Point. We both graduated from Silverton High School in 93. And we're happy with our educations here and happy to be back in town and we now have young kids that will be entering into the public school system here and we're looking forward to that. So, just wanted to start with that. I have a four-year-old who is beyond the cutoff date of September 1st, or sorry, yeah, September 1st. And I was inquiring around town about whether or not there was an early admittance policy and I learned that there is no longer an early admittance policy for kindergarten in our district. And I was wanting to come to ask the board to reconsider and at least discuss whether or not that policy might be of benefit. In my particular case, my four-year-old has been in preschool for two years and she's been with the class that is actually going into kindergarten in the fall and has always loved school, but this, after Christmas, our preschool decided to hold her back so that she could get used to going with the younger kids. Ever since then, I've been hearing complaints about how school's boring and the kids can't color and they don't know their ABCs, you know, the usual four-year-old litany of complaints. But I'm, what I'm concerned about is that if I hold her back a full year, that I'll hear those complaints not only for the next year, but for many years to come because she's going to be so far ahead of her classmates. So, as I see it, my options are private kindergarten and then put her into first grade in which she would be in the same case, or in the same situation as whether she went to public kindergarten in the fall, or ask you guys to reconsider the early admittance policy.
I think there's one other option as well. The charter schools we have in town, have you checked into those and possibility of getting into that?
I have not yet, but I did hear that was an option, yes. So I will check.
And I believe we talked on the phone and...
We did.
We're only about, your child's birthday is September 10th, so you're about 10 days short.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a tough situation. I also spoke with her preschool provider and inquired with her about, you know, her opinion about where my daughter is in reference with the other kids and, and she actually advocated that I keep her back. She told me the studies about how usually the older kids do better in class. But then, right after that, she said that, you know, she has at least four students that will be in kindergarten next year that aren't nearly as ready for kindergarten as my daughter is, so. But because of their, you know, birthdays, they get to go.
Yeah Lydia, I think we changed, we looked at that policy a few years ago and ended up changing it because of the, you know, because of the fact that kids end up showing, you know, problems later on down the road, either socially or academically. And when we, when we adopted this new policy, I know we talked about double promotion, that we're more than willing to double promote the kids if they, if they're ready later on. So I think that's the, kind of the route we're taking. How do you feel about that, that side of it, if she'd wait a year for kindergarten?
I, I think double promotion could be an option. My biggest concern is just starting off this, you know, kind of her career in public school and if that starts off kind of roughly, I'm afraid it will kind of set her up for not doing well. It's frustrating when you're, when you're a bored student in class. It's equally frustrating if you're, you know, struggling in class. So I don't want, I want her to be in the middle, not on one end or the other. And I don't see how holding, I don't see how waiting to put her in kindergarten is going to help her be in the middle. It's going to push her towards kind of the top of her class, which could be a great thing, or it could mean disruption and, you know, from boredom. So that's my concern.
Okay.
Double promotion would be fine, except for we have to go through that first year first to see how that goes and then we're kind of struggling for that whole year. That's what I'm imagining will happen anyways.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Not a question so much, but I was just saying that I did hear from, just coincidentally, about the same time that I heard from Ms. Peters, that I heard from another person of similar questions and concerns for their son. So having it come up twice, coincidentally here in a short amount of time for me, just made me wonder if we have any kind of idea how many, how many possible kids were, you know, are affected. Like you said, we changed the policy, I think, a few years ago. We probably had that information at that time, but anyway.
Maybe we could get a little review on when we changed that policy Andy, or do you have any more details now, or is that something we should look at at our next work session or something?
Well, that, that's up to you, the board, if you want to revisit its policy. J E V A is a policy that you rescinded as a board and I believe it was winter 2011. And so that would have been after, that would have been after a few months. When you rescind a policy, you have a similar review process as you do for adoption or revisions to policy. It takes a few months of public input and review by you. And at the time, I do recall that some of the data included, and similar to some of the information that Lydia, that you're sharing as well, is that, is that the, of, of the previous cases and requests for double promotion, the majority of requests were actually not eligible based upon assessments that were used. The assessments were limited largely to academic performance of a four-year-old at the time and, and Tim, what you recall is correct, is that, is that over time, based upon the number of cases that, that we had related to early entrance into kindergarten, is that the students that we did allow early entrance over time were, some of them, most of them operated at the, at the average level. Some of them though were considered for retention at some point in the future and part of that was, had to do with the social emotional development that's very difficult to assess for a student at four years of age. It's much more, I think, reasonable and, and maybe specific to do the social emotional evaluation as a student goes through the system. We don't know the child at four years of age. And so those are the, that's the recollection that's coming back to me at this point, thinking four years ago when the board made this decision. So if you would like to reconsider that or have some additional information, we surely can. Owen's correct, we have heard from one other parent this spring, but if I think, and I'll have to tap into Linda, maybe Linda a little bit, if I think over the past few years, I'm recalling really next to none for, for requests into early entrance into kindergarten. I think once people understood, then, then the question wasn't asked.
It might be worthwhile, at least reviewing the data.
Sure.
If we looked at four years ago to bring these back.
You can do that.
I believe we looked at the data a lot at that time and I think it's respectful to be an advocate for your child and I'm all for that and, you know, but there was a lot of information given to us at that time and yes, that some kids had a lot more in the home where they were able to start at a different level than other kids, but the long-term information we received is that it wasn't beneficial to the kids. And that was what, I mean, that was the end-all, why we decided to make a policy on it, is that the overall information we received was that the kids don't do better when they get older. And, you know, I, I know of three situations that are very close to me personally, including myself, that started younger. And it, socially it changes, when they get their driver's license, when they have different situations that come up, it is very different. And, you know, right now, you're probably totally spot-on, your kid needs more, but in the overall scheme of those 12 years to change a policy for that, I don't know if that's necessarily the best decision for the school district. And I, we did discuss it thoroughly, that I don't know if we really need to go back and change a policy. And, and I respect what you're doing, but at the same time, we really did go in depth with it. That's my assessment.
So not with the intent necessarily of changing policy, but it might be useful for us just to refresh ourselves and also in turn the community about why we have the policy that we have. So we could spend, in my view, we could spend a little bit of time just going over it in a work session and...
I believe Linda, you had some information at that time, you know, about those numbers and maybe that could be brought up at that work session then.
We have to join if that means...
If you just said something, I'm... You're... Let's have Siri.
Siri.
Also, also if we do, if we do review some of the data a little bit, put it in the context of all-day kindergarten, because that's one of my first questions, is a, is a child barely five, five years old going into all-day kindergarten? So that's, that'd be a concern of mine also. So maybe we can frame it around that, if we review the data a little bit, so.
That's a good comment.
Could I add a couple of comments to that?
Yeah.
So, for, starting at the kindergarten age, I do think there's a, there's a huge, I can imagine, I don't know for sure, but I can imagine there's a huge range of the ability of a child going to kindergarten. In my case, because she's been at preschool, all-day preschool for two years, that's going to be a lot different than a child who probably hasn't been at preschool at all. So, and, and maybe that was, you know, a decision that I, in retrospect, I might have changed it, knowing that she couldn't go to kindergarten now, but so it is. And then as far as when they get older, we, my husband and I have actually thought a lot about that, because that's, my first thing goes to, well, if my child graduates from high school and she's only 17, you know, what's that like? But my husband actually has the same birthdate and he said, you know, what's the big deal? I was 17, it was no big deal. So, you know, the perspective is different based on how well they performed, I suppose, in school. But, you know, when we were in school, the date was November, something like that, so we had a lot of young kids in our class and didn't necessarily seem to be a problem.
Okay.
And also I wanted to point out that there are several school districts, actually almost every school district around us that has an early admittance policy. Some of them go out two months.
Yeah, well, everybody has their own.
Everyone's a little different, but I think Salem was the shortest with a 10-day kind of overlap and several of them go out a couple months, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you Lydia.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, yes? Yes, please, come on up. Please sign in and...
Sure.
Your name and address and then give us your name and address.
Can you read my writing room all done? My name is Mark Herman, so I'm actually from Beaverton. Do you need my full address?
You can put it down.
Okay. I came here tonight, I represent Taylor Metals, I'm sure all of you have received my letter and I'm not, and correct me if I'm wrong, if this is not the form to discuss this, I wasn't quite sure what the status of the contracts for the re-roofing projects were that went up to bid last week. Like I said, if this is not the form, or, I want to make myself available today and answer questions and to see if there's a resolution, if the project's going up, a rebid or sticking with the current procedure.
It's, it's an action item tonight.
Oh, it is?
To approve the contract, to award the contract.
Okay.
With Arrow. So. But this would be the time for him to give testimony if he wants to, or will there be other opportunity for that? I would imagine this would be the time, yeah.
This would be the time?
Yeah.
Anyway. Go ahead Tom.
Well, no, yeah. Okay, okay. And then I, I wanted the board to be assured that the reason I, the reason I wrote the letter is because it seemed like the spec was written to exclude any competition for material. Not that Garland's material isn't, is poor quality, whatever, I've, I personally have used it before in the past, no issues with that at all. They're a great company, great product, no issues with that. Our only concern was that all the other suppliers were excluded, therefore creating only one supplier and one bid number being used for the materials, not for the installation, but for the materials for the project.
Mm-hmm.
And we wanted to see if we could go out to rebid and open that, that spec out, open a little bit more to allow more people to bid on the project. We're a local company, we're out of Salem. We employ 80-some-odd people in the local area. Louis Doll, who's with me tonight, is actually a salesman who lives in Silverton, along with about, about 10 or so other employees at our company that, that live, work, pay taxes here. The money that we produce stays there, Oregon income taxes, our owners live in here in Oregon also. And we wanted to see if a local company, we could save the school district quite a bit of money. And I understand that if we're not open to rebid and more suppliers were introduced, we might not get the project, I understand that. But we just want to see if it can go open to, to rebid, because I think the, by only having one supplier, the school district is really being locked into paying more than it should be for the project.
So I guess I do have a question for you.
Please.
Some, some of the other bidders did, did offer an alternate, why didn't you?
We are a supplier, we're not an installer. And when I did do a substitution request for the project, but the substitution, the procedure makes it nearly impossible to be approved as a supplier. One of the main contentions is that in the substitution procedure calls out that you have to meet the warranty requirements, but yet the warranty requirements are not listed anywhere. So I can't meet something if the requirement's not there, if I can't have a copy of the warranty that you're holding the standard to. And also in the, in the specification that usually describes the product, there was no name for the product in there. It's, it's impossible to look up on the specs to say, oh, this is what I need to match and this is the product we're going after. Also, and the specs are given to the public, there were no prints. So if you're sitting at the computer and you download from the plan center for the public, that you have no idea what's even bid on the project yet. Granted, that material was available at the job walk, which I did not attend, probably should have, but I did not attend the job walk. So that, that information was there, but it was not readily available for the average person sitting there looking at the prints online and trying to figure it out. Green light, 30 seconds left?
A minute.
Okay, okay. Does, does that answer your question?
Kind of, but in a way, but we did have other suppliers that did, did offer alternate materials, so it may have helped if you were on the job walk.
Were they approved?
I can't say off the hand. Andy, can you speak to that?
There were seven, there was, there was, you know, we may have to rely upon Joel, there were seven submitted proposals and you have a recommendation in front of you tonight.
Well, this would be not, not for installers, this would be for suppliers for material.
I believe, yeah, I believe we had some back and forth, some questions and I believe, I believe it was only one supplier supplied. I didn't see any other options on suppliers of material.
Because of the specifications that are, that were required.
Right, no, 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 but Wally mentioned that he felt there was some other installers offered some other materials.
Doesn't understand it.
Yeah, I don't think that was true. It was only one supplier of materials.
I believe that the, that, I believe that's correct, but I also believe that the, the proposals submitted had the option of providing manufacturer material from other providers as well. I believe that's what you're referring to, Wally.
Okay, I meant the spec.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
One of the questions that I, I had as I was reading through this is that the job walk, I believe, was on February 5th and yet the submission for substitution of materials was required to be submitted by February 5th at 10:00 AM. So they basically occurred on the same date, maybe even the submission request for substitution was due before the job walk, just as...
So I just have a couple of comments. I really appreciate your letter and bringing this to our attention. I think some of us have a bunch of questions about this whole process, in particular this bidding process and the way that it was structured. Competitive bidding for public entities in the state of Oregon, like in all other states, exists for a reason and that's so that we have a truly competitive process where basically the public entity that's buying products and services gets the best bang for its buck.
Right.
And it doesn't appear that, to me at least, I mean, I'm not a specialist in this, just as none of us here are, it doesn't appear to me that this bid process, as it's structured, which is, if I understand it correctly, the one supplier that we're talking about basically created and essentially supervised the entire process.
That is correct.
So it, it doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, the outcome of the competitive bidding process is almost a certainty when you start out with it. So the competitive part is, is really lost. You know, you can, you can use all sorts of unflattering terms for a process like that, but, you know, I have really enormous concerns about that because in my service as a school board member, I've listened to legislators gripe enormously about requests for additional funding for public education and tell us, you know, you're wasting so much money and you're wasting in a variety of ways and I think that this is likely one of them. So...
I would agree.
But David, having you said that, when we got this letter from Taylor and I know Andy, Andy and Joel responded to us, but they, we also sent this away to one of our attorneys to look into this and the process that the district went through was totally cleared by the attorney. He said it was fair, he said it was the way things are normally done and so to allude that the process was skewed somehow, I think is wrong. It's, we had, we, we did have this totally looked into.
Well, it may meet the letter of the law, okay, but I don't think that it meets the intent at all and I don't think it takes much more than common sense to see that. So I think, you know, we're elected to be the best stewards that we possibly can be for public funds and I think when you look at something like this, you have to scratch your head and wonder, what in the world's going on? In addition, it only takes five minutes for a layperson who's not necessarily very technologically adept to go to Google and find out that the company in question has a track record that's really pretty dismal as far as convictions in other states for all sorts of poor business practices, let's say that. Okay? So I, I have real concerns about this and I think, I think, you know, it's probably a statewide problem, it's probably a statewide problem in many states. It's easier for a local district to go this route. It may be technically legal, but whether it's right is... It may be technically legal, but whether it's right is another issue. So, that's my view.
Mark, I had a question for you. I know we have a, in a situation like this, there's, the way I understand it, there's an opportunity to protest.
Yes.
You can submit a protest, but you guys did not do that. You just sent the letter to the board. Why? Why didn't you submit a protest if this was that big of a deal to you?
Protest, well, I wasn't aware of a protest clause in there. That's why we sent the letter to the board, because to us, that is our protest. I wasn't familiar with the protest clause that they were able to do that. I was only familiar with the submittal process, which our product was rejected prior to bid. That's, correct me if I'm wrong, though, I could be.
Well, I've understood, Andy, do you want to?
Yeah, and based upon review from your attorney, is that the protest, the protest language was not used as well, substitution or protest language?
Okay.
That it was, it was in the invitation to bid process.
It was used.
Correct.
Okay.
That it was available.
It's also in the Oregon Administrative Rules relating to the public bid process, so I think that anybody undertaking to participate in the bid process is deemed to be familiar with and have access to the, you know, and supposed to be familiar with those rules as well. So I wondered as well why the Taylor letter was so untimely. I think had that been received on time, we probably would have had some more discretion in deeming that to be, you know, a protest. But the way I understand it, the rules are pretty specific on timelines as well, so we lose some discretionary ability once, you know, when things don't come in on time. Bottom line, that's my understanding of it.
May I ask a question then? Do you know where I can find those rules? I have not seen them. A specification book is 700 pages long, it's buried in there somewhere, I'm not.
The OARs are available online if you just type in Oregon Administrative Rules under Google and look at section 137.
Okay. Do you happen to know what those timelines are?
I don't often.
Mark, have you ever been involved in challenging a product's specifications, you know, in something like this to where you challenge, you come in and they spec one product and you come in and challenge and get yours? Or do you have any experience with other manufacturers doing that? Is that an easy process?
It's a very easy process. We do it on a daily basis. There's a form that's required, usually it's a form that just requires stating what the product, the specifications was, what you're proposing, what's attached with the product data that goes along with it. And, you know, we get rejected all the time.
Right.
And we get approved all the time. It's, but at least there's other people other than Taylor out there that's doing it also. We bid a couple of projects this weekend, myself, AEP Span, Metal Span, I'm sorry, Metal Sales, Breyer Company, AMS up in Washington, all these companies are, we are similar products. We got approved on the projects and you bid a competitive bid, so we have to put together our best number, because we're competing against other manufacturers.
So why is this one so hard and those ones seem to be easy?
Well, the, like I said, the, under the submittal procedure for sending out procedures, for substituting, sorry, a little nervous, for substituting, not all the information there, for instance, the warranty information, like I mentioned earlier, was not there, we cannot, that's required to match the warranty, but we didn't know what the warranty was, you couldn't match it. There was, they put requirements in there that an engineer has to sign off on your panel system before it gets approved, stamped engineer for Oregon, which would mean each company's substitute would have to go out and spend $700 to $800 to get an approval for a panel system, which all of us have already gone through independent ASTM UL testing for the panel systems. It's not a typical thing you'd see in a substitution request. It's usually just a material gauge, the, how the profile, how it holds up, how it's been tested, the watertightness of it, and things like that. But, and there's, oh, another thing in there, it required that the president of our company personally sign off on that, on the warranty and the product itself. Never seen that in any other substitution before.
And it's typically, is it, I mean, are you typically running up against this with certain companies or other, or is it?
I'll be very honest, Garland is the one company that we seem to never, we never tried to break their spec, but I know, I was on the installer's side for almost 20 years, and Garland's specs, they, since they write the spec, and we, I'd do it too if I could. If you write the spec, you're writing your own meal ticket, because you can write any exclusion in there you want, and to try to keep other people out. So Garland's spec is the only one that I have not seen people be successful in breaking, and therefore they get monopoly on the districts that they lock in. Not only districts, but on private. We have worked, and Mr. Roth, this would not be a complaint if it's a private entity. There's been numerous companies that have chosen to use Garland. Not a problem, it's private money. I have no saying that, I will not protest that, because that's their business. But since it is public money and is a monopoly on a manufacturer, I feel it needs to be open to bid, to competitive bidding.
So just for the benefit of the people in the audience who are wondering, what in the world are we talking about? If you don't understand, we're talking about a competitive bidding process for public procurement of metal roofing materials, and the discussion that we're having is about a bid process that appears to be structured by a manufacturer to exclude other bidders from effectively competing in the bidding process, the competitive bidding process. So we're not sure about the figures, but some feel that the product that we're talking about is as much as four times the cost of a similar product, a comparable product, made by a local or regional manufacturer. So that's really the issue here. Do we spend public dollars on something that may cost four times more than some, that's made in Ohio, I think, and shipped out here, or do we spend public dollars raised by Oregon taxpayers on a product that is closely comparable and made locally? And I think your point earlier about spending public dollars in the local economy or the regional economy as much as possible is really a good one, because even if those of us who are not economists know about the multiplier effect of dollars spent in the local economy, and on this board, we've talked about that a number of times in the past with respect to layoffs of staff, staff reductions, when we had tough budget times, because if you keep those people employed, the money that they earn and they spend in the local economy has a huge multiplier effect, and it keeps other businesses healthy and afloat as well. So I think this is an important issue for a school board to be considering, where we spend the money and how we spend it, and, you know, that's my point of view on this issue.
I agree with much what you said, David. I think there's one clarification you're incorrect, one piece you're incorrect on. We did not bid out the material, that was part of our spec, we bid it out to installation companies. And maybe we need to take a look at that, but it was a fully competitive bid with the material that we apparently stipulated.
And if I, and all the other installers who, or a lot of the other installers, use the same product, so, and there was quite a range of bids with the same product even, so I'm not sure saying that this product is four times more expensive than others is accurate. A lot of the information we've been hearing is off of the internet, and I question that sometimes.
Well, I can tell you for a fact, Mr. Roth, that in the past when I have installed our product for standing seam, 18-inch wide standing seam metal roof system, and Louis can back me up, this, we bid this every day, about $1.55, $1.60 a square foot is what we typically charge, depending on the size of the job, of course, it changes. My experience in the past with Garland is that their material cost alone is usually around the $500 to $550 per square foot range. That's what personally paid in the past for Garland. I don't know what the bids are on this one, I've not seen what the material costs were for this project, but I would assume that, given the track record, it's probably following the same path.
Well, yeah. I don't know if that's right or not.
I'd like to agree with a lot of what David said too, except I do want to just again emphasize the point, because we've addressed this in other bidding situations as well, particularly with regard to who our experts are and our consultants are for some of our other large building projects, and the desire to use local qualified businesses. And I'm 100% for that, however, that is predicated on other, on local qualified businesses submitting us RFPs and wanting to do the job and being competitive, and doing all that within the guidelines that we have to follow. So I really, again, I would like nothing more than to use local folks, but they've just got to comply with the rules, I guess.
Just, not to monopolize the conversation, but I think, once again, if the rules for the process is crafted by the supplier, that the process, which was crafted by the supplier, favors, you know, we ought not to be doing that.
Well, I'm referring specifically, the rules I'm referring to are the administrative rules for the state of Oregon, so that'd be the, you know, if somebody has a complaint about the specs and about the RFP, that those are submitted to us on time, in this case specifically. I'll be the first one to admit that I don't understand a lot of this stuff, it's beyond my, it's beyond my scope as well, it should be. And that's why, in my opinion, that's why we hire people like Joel Smallwood, that's to look into this and to know the specs that we need for our buildings in this district. And that's why we have a good maintenance director, and that's why we hired him to look into this stuff. And I trust his opinion on a lot of this stuff, because he knows what we need, and I trust him to get us the best deal. And, I mean, I just need to say that, because, you know, I don't know if anybody on this board is qualified to be, to be doing some of the managing that I think some of us have been trying to do in this, on this issue. So, and I don't, you know, that's why we hire, that's why we hire people to do this for us. And, you know, I'm sure Joel will be attentive to this stuff in the future and make sure that everything's covered. I believe that he was on this one. I'm just, I'm just wondering about, you know, that end of it. So he's a lot more qualified than I know I am to be making these decisions.
I agree with you, I think Joel does a great job, but we're also the ones that in the end have to make the decision, and so we need to be as informed as possible. And one of the things I do have a question on, you seem to have some information on the variation of costs, but what about the warranty? Because that's also something that definitely follows up with a cost for square footage.
Okay. Right, so the warranty, unfortunately, and I hate to be a dead horse, I have not seen a copy of the warranty that has been offered at Silverton School District, it's not available. So I know in the past, and I could be completely wrong, I don't think I am, though.
Fake it, what do you got?
Okay, so a typical warranty, for instance, the one that is currently in place at the high school. That metal roof was installed about, what, four to five years ago, and believe it's a 20-year weather tight warranty. There's a one-time fee, that's the AEP span, and when that roof was installed, AEP span did a review of the drawings, they came out, inspected the roof, did pre-construction, they walked the roof midway, make sure it's being done right, and did a final inspection on the roof. And far as I know, you've never had any leaks at that roof above the gymnasium, and it's a 20-year period. The thought on that is that 99% of the time, if something's going to leak, it's going to leak within the first two years, you're going to see it, storms are going to come through. So the Garland warranty, and that warranty, I don't remember how much that warranty cost, but, I don't remember. The Garland warranty is a 30-year warranty, but it's not a 30-year, you pay it once and you're done. Typically, the Garland warranties have to be renewed every five years with an inspection that is not a pre-inspection, it's a paid-for inspection. I believe these specs actually said the roof has to be inspected every year. I don't know if there's a cost involved with that, I have not seen the warranty. Typically, that is a cost that is paid, so they come out, they inspect the roof, if there's any repairs that need to be made, they have to be made, which is reasonable if, in order for the warranty to stay in place. But it's not a free service, you're paying for that warranty for the next 30 years. But I don't know what that cost is, I'm sorry.
And your warranty is?
Our warranty for this particular project, we charge about $300 per inspection, it's between $100 to $900 to $1000 for the size of project, and that includes my boss, Fred Norgren, he's not here tonight, he's been in Portland area for 40 years now, probably. That includes him doing those inspections, meeting with the foremen's and making sure everything's being done properly. And that's what it really boils down to, is quality of the guys working on the projects, and especially these roofs here are very simple roofs, there's, it's, there's not a lot on them. It's, it ends up being a flat metal panel with no fasteners in it from top to bottom. It's not going to leak on you, you're going to pay a one-time fee, probably around $1,000 for the warranty, and that pays for our time, because we don't want it to leak. Our name's on it.
And so, but you only give a year there.
No, we, 20-year warranty, I'm sorry.
A 20-year?
Yes, that'd be for a 20-year weather tight warranty. In fact, I believe on this one here, I know for a fact I did, when I did this submittal, since they call for a 30-year, we discussed it at the office, and the owner was willing to go ahead and push out to a 30-year warranty. But that, it's a one-time fee. Does anybody know what the cost is for the warranty for every year we pay for that?
No, but I'm gonna, zero, Joel's saying zero, our maintenance director. And I'm gonna ask Joel if during, at the end of our discussion items, because we want to move along here and give other people a chance to speak during our audience with visitors, but Joel, would you want to come up and give or clarify some of this stuff or address it, please? Okay.
Well, I do, I mean, I got a comment. For me, the red, you know, I'm not a qualified prefer, I don't manufacture roofing or install it, but for me, you know, I got to make the decider, I'm the decider, if someone's upset, they're going to come yelling at me. And for me, what I didn't like, I love seeing that we've got six different outfits competing for the installation, but we saw no competition for the material. And that, that to me was the red flag. It's a process that's flawed, you got to have competition, and that's what reassures me that, you know, and then we have the competition, then we have Joel, the manager, say, ah, that guy's cheap, but the roof's annoying, you know, we see a leak over here, or we have a consultant come help us out, but we sorted it out. But I was looking, I've been talking to some consultants and stuff, and we had our lawyers look at this, but somebody pointed out to me that the public contracts manual, and I got the policy here, and it's, I think it's ORS 279B.210, policy development of specifications, and I'll read it, it won't take me too long. It is the policy of the state of Oregon to encourage the development of clear, precise, and accurate specifications and solicitations for public contracts. To that end, in developing specifications, contracting agencies must, may consult under contract or otherwise with technical experts, suppliers, prospective contractors, and representatives of the industries with which the contracting agency's contracted. And this is, this next sentence is the one that I put a comment, that caught my eye. However, a contracting agency shall take reasonable measures to ensure that no person who prepares or assists in the preparation of solicitation documents, specification, plans, or scopes of work, and no business with which the person is associated, realize a material competitive advantage in a procurement that arises from the agency's use of the solicitation documents, specifications, plans, or scopes of work. The policy against the realization of material competitive advantage, character, and it goes on to there, but it appears to me that we had a supplier come in and say, here's our free guy, he'll write the specs up for you, but he wrote the specs up in such a way that he was guaranteed the job. That's the way I see it, and I saw no competition, and that bothered me, it's a red flag, so.
So maybe as a result of this, we need to start looking at our, some of our policies and procedures for future work. I think it's a little bit late in the game to change it right now.
It could be, I don't know, I wish we'd have been able to have a work session.
We can ask Joel about that.
We could, we could. I've been speaking with a consultant, a roofing consultant, who's experienced with this, and he, you know, he described trying to, essentially, you know, this supplier came in with a, oh, a set of boilerplate documents, and we filled them out and changed our specs. And he's been working with OASBO and OSBA and Oregon Society of Maintenance Directors, I think Joel's going to be the next president, and what he described, he's trying to develop a binder, essentially, a set of standard documents, that we can then, that standard documents, standard warranties to help guide. documents that we can then, that standard documents, standard warranties to help guide us through the process. And we don't have to have, and it would help to eliminate this kind of, kind of what we have here. Essentially, have, have our agencies underneath OSBA develop documents and standards for us to guide us through this and help us through this minefield so things like this don't happen. And so I would, I would encourage more of that, kind of with, like what you're going through, Wally, with, kind of what you said. We need, we need to improve our policies on, 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 on the state level in my, to encourage, encourage more competition. Agree?
So.
Okay.
One more quick comment. We do rely on staff for recommendations and advice, but the ultimate responsibility for the expenditure of public money lies with this elected board of directors. You can't pass that responsibility off to someone else. It's ours.
I understand that, David.
So.
Well, I appreciate your, your folks' time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Mr. Kazer.
My name is Steve Kazer. I reside at 502 Lewis Street in Silverton. I am not a roofing expert. I want you to know that upfront. We're not going to talk about roofing. And what I want to know is this. What is your plan? Should this roof that you're going to put on these buildings fail in five years and the company is no longer in existence? And the reason I float that idea, because it is obvious to me that this company has in fact been barred from doing business in other states, is, does have some legal problems. It's surrounded in accusations of one kind or another, some founded, some non-founded. So I'm sure that when you chose this product, that you, being intelligent people and performing your due diligence, that you looked at the credibility and the possibility of this company being around for the life of the warranty. And so I was just kind of curious. What is your plan B should this thing fail in five or 10 years? Is this, is my understanding correct that this product is only built by Garland? And if this product disappears off the Garland shelf because they're no longer in business, where does that leave you and the school district, the taxpayers' money?
Good question. I think, I believe our contract's going to be with, again, I haven't looked at the contract, but I believe our contract's with a roofing company, not with a manufacturer.
Well, this is, this is fine.
And normally, it'd be at least a 10-year warranty, just with the, with the companies.
Well, Wally, I understand what you're saying. What I'm hearing the board say here is that you have a contract legitimate, and you went out and got it with the installers. But if you have $344,000 or whatever dollars worth of this roofing on a building, yes, the installer is who you go to. But what if he cannot get his hands on the replacement product? Is he responsible for tearing the whole thing off and putting on conventional roof? That's my point. The product, not the installation. If the product ceases to become available because the company goes out of business, where does that leave the taxpayers on the warranty? That's my question. Have, if you've looked at this, no problem. If you haven't looked at it, you better look hard. Because in my 44 years of business, companies go broke all the time for many reasons. And I've found out or heard enough about Garland. For me, the red flag goes up and I say, I'm not sure I want to even try to go down that street. I don't, I'm not sure I want to take that chance, because that's what you're doing. So you're the guys that, like David said, and I agree wholeheartedly, you can't pass this buck off on anybody. It fails in five years, there's no, nothing to do but tear it off, put on another roof. Tom and Julie and Wally and Tim and Owen and David and Irvin, whether you're here or not, you're going to have to bear the, bear the responsibility because you didn't perform a good enough due diligence as far as the reliability of the company to sustain the warranty for 30 years. It don't make a difference what they charge. Are they going to be here 30 years from now? Thank you.
Anyone else? Somebody behind you was, had their hand up first, so come on up.
My name is Danette Rennett, and I live in Zone 6 in Malala on Rosewood Way. And the concern that I would like to present tonight is one that will affect the entire school district, each school within, which is just a potential plan that I heard wind of, of moving all of the special ed kids throughout the district to Scott's Mills. Now, this may be moot if that's not the direction that the board is going to move to. And let me sign in really quickly here.
Danette?
Uh huh.
I can clarify one thing. The, the plan that you're, might, might be referring to only involves a couple of the special ed classes at Eugene Field.
Okay.
It's not district-wide.
Okay.
And it's still under discussion.
Okay, good.
It's still under discussion. And it's to, you know, to free up space at Eugene Field because for all day kindergarten. But it's not district, it's not all the special ed kids in the district. It's only a couple of classes at Eugene Field.
Okay. In that case, I'll address those particular children. One of my concerns first and foremost with any kids being removed from the rest of their peers is if they're not with the mainstream. And again, I'm eager to hear details of this because some of these points could be moot. For the special ed kids to have regular access and some integration with the regular population kids gives them tremendous potential to grow socially. And it also gives the children in the mainstream classes the ability to gain some perspective and acceptance of the children with those special needs. It's also a challenge for the, the parents and the families of the children, the special needs children, would need to face having to transport one child all the way out to Scott's Mills or put them on a bus for a long drive out there, which is pretty difficult for those kiddos. And then also have to bring other siblings of those kiddos out to other areas. Beyond the social development for these kids, it's also stifling to their educational potential if it ends up being in a situation, which I would hope it would not, where it is a large group of kids in the same space. There does tend to be a lot of noise going on with, with these kids. They've got various sensory issues that can be an issue. And it gets difficult with even a small handful of them to try to focus and learn on what the material is when there's so much distraction and disruption. Again, hopefully, hopefully this is a moot argument, but if that is the case, those are big concerns for me. Let alone, I'm eager to hear details on how nursing staff would be able to properly get to those kiddos in a timely manner, being farther out. So I'm, I'm interested to hear more logistics of that as, as the discussion moves.
This is one of our discussion items tonight. And maybe Linda, could you shed some light on some of her questions possibly when we get to that?
Certainly.
That area?
Yeah. One of the biggest things is just understanding what we're doing with our third graders at Eugene Field. And then once that decision's made, how do we support our students? So, certainly. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here and, and to be a part of this process, which I think is really important for everybody that's involved, especially the citizens.
Could you give us your name?
Yes. My name is Jim Squires.
Okay.
Okay. One of the things that really concerns me is that what I'm hearing is because it's the, the 11th hour of trying to put this bid together and, and be done with it and put it out there to get started on a project, that you don't have the time to do what is right. Now, everybody gets the opportunity to do what is right. It's whether they choose to or not. And it, it just kind of bothers me that, that there are people that even sit on this board that wouldn't want to be treated like that. I spent 30 years as a contractor, and I wouldn't have wanted to be treated like that. And I, and I can tell you from my personal experience, it won't be long before you'll have a hard time getting anybody to bid on anything for you because you're not fair. And I just want to say that. Don't let the 11th hour be what stops you from what, from doing what is right because it involves many people. It's a ripple effect. When you do wrong, it ripples all the way across the city and also across the state because then you get the reputation of not being right or not being fair or not taking the time to do what is right or fair when you have the opportunity to. And that's all I want to say. And, and I'm here for any questions that you might have for me.
Questions?
See, I, I would just like to summarize by saying, I think some of the problems that we're having with divisiveness in this, in the school district and with our citizens is because of this kind of activity. A lot of people don't have the trust factor that the district had at one time. So it's things like this that makes people lose trust. It's things like this that we need to back up and correct and change. And I would just hope that would, that you would take the time to do that because it can't be so important that we can't take the time to do what is right. And I would ask you, each and every one of you, as elected officials, don't be in such a big hurry to hand something off. And I can tell you, you know, Taylor Metals is an excellent company. And they had a, they have an excellent president. She served as, as the mayor of Salem for a long time. So this isn't a riffraff type situation. And then on the other hand, I'm hearing that this other Garland company is, is kind of undesirable. And I, and I don't understand why you would be so quick to jump on something and hand off almost $400,000 to somebody like, Mr. Kazer said, we, we don't know that they're going to be here tomorrow. And I'm just saying, please, for the sake of the community and the sake of hard-earned dollars, please don't be so quick at the 11th hour to do this. Let's change, let's start a new pattern, a new habit. Just take the time to do what is right because you all have the opportunity to. And I thank you for allowing me to come up here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Hi, Jessica Veeth, and I live on Travis Drive here in Silverton. And I just wanted to come up here because I don't get the opportunity to come to as many meetings as I'd like to. I work every other Monday. And so I might not get the chance to personally thank the board members who are not up for reelection. So I just wanted to say thank you, Julie. Thank you, Owen. I think you've done an amazing job. I think the community needs to remember that you're volunteers. And it takes a lot. It's a, it's huge time commitment. And I'm just really grateful for everything that you've done. And Tim, I hope to see you back here. I think you've done an amazing job. And I'd also like to address something that is alarming to me, just sitting in the audience, listening to some of the testimony tonight. And when I hear people up here and they keep saying dollars and hard-earned money, taxpayers' money, yes, schools are funded by our taxes. But if your heart is in it as board members and you're doing what you feel is right for children, that's good enough for me. I don't feel like any of you need to be experts in some of the things, like being able to bid the best contractor. I think we should be looking at, you know, I mean, with that said, money is important. We do need to be responsible. But if you do what's best for children, everything else is going to fall into place. So I'd really like to hear the conversations focused back to what's good for children. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Jessica. Anyone else? We also have another opportunity later in the meeting for audience with visitors.
Thank you for having the occasion to speak. I am Gene Pfeifer, and you've heard me many times, of course. I've been here many times, and my efforts always are to come to help the district. Now, I know that I've scolded the boards a few times, but my, my main goal is to help, to help get something passed that will be digestible to the whole community and, and produce scholastic results. So currently, we're facing possible shortfall in funding of $600,000 to $800,000. That's significant. The legislative just passed how much it was going to be and still says it's short. So here we are at a point where we're spending money that we shouldn't be spending. We just had a conversation. I appreciate how long you took on the conversation, but the, we're spending $380,000 on something that I don't think needs to be done. My take on it, I could go on and add more things about what the contract is and those type of things. But in my personal opinion, knowing the particular buildings that the work is being done on, I don't think the work is necessary. Not right now. I don't believe it's an emergency. We, we've got, Mark Twain has a PVC roof on it. It should be lasting much longer than what has been installed. Victor Point School has a PVC roof on it. The Bus Barn, I'm not sure about those conditions, but in looking at it, there is a, the PVC roof is on the main part that's next to the shop. The new high school, we're talking about putting a coating on it, and we haven't even had it there for 15 years. Why are we putting a new coating on it? So I'm questioning why we're doing any of this $380,000 expenditure. So my simple request to you is put it on hold until we know what in the world's happening with our funds. That's, that's my one topic. The other topic is the Ag Shop. I heard, I don't know when it was, three weeks ago or so, that there was a plan to demo the building. That plan had originated before the bond, the two bond elections had passed or had been denied by the public. And so we're still moving forward with it to demo it before we know what's going to happen. We don't know what the plans will be, even from the designers that have been hired. We don't know what the plans are. We don't know what the budget is. Joel admits he doesn't know if it's going to work. And yet we keep moving forward. So we're going to lose an asset that currently is worth about $500,000. And I presented, I took the time to go and meet with Andy myself personally about two weeks ago, and then I sent a copy to the board members. And he talked about, we'll see what the designers think and that kind of discussion. Well, there's currently an RFP forbids this Friday, the 17th, to tear the building down. So I, I find that this is very disturbing. We have a building that's an asset in the community. It can break the plans. And if anyone wants a, a copy of it, I brought some with me. The plans are well-drawn. They show that the possibility is there to put seven classrooms in there of about 1,000 square feet or thereabouts each, and to have offices, hallways, restrooms, a little library, all kinds of storage areas, all kinds of function, and a covered walkway to the main building. And we're talking about tearing it down. Now, at one point, when you thought that you were going to tear everything down, which I disagree with wholeheartedly because we're tearing down like $20 million of value, we shouldn't be doing this until we know what's going on. So I'm trying to help even on the path that you're on, which I totally disagree with. But if we're going to do it, this, using this structure that we have is much better than to put in modules that are disconnected, that are no restrooms, no hallways, all the problems that the teachers are telling you that they have a problem with, yet we're proliferating that. So I, I would like to personally ask you, and maybe you could have a little bit of discussion with me, to put this on hold. Now, it sounds like the roofing thing might go on hold because of the other problems with it. But it shouldn't be done. But to deal with demoing this building before it should be done, we, we need to know more about what's going on. The, the plan I submitted doesn't mean it has to be the plan that I drew, but it certainly shows a solution. So tell me, what is going to happen? You're going to be receiving, our, our request for proposals coming in on this Friday, the 17th. What are we going to do with that? What are we going to do with that?
We're probably going to look at those, and as far as I know, we're going to move ahead. Gene, every plan that we've presented about converting Slater to a middle school has that building gone. When we talked about a bond, that building was gone. Just for one thing, to make it easier to have a bus drop-off in the back of the buildings, you know, just to be able to reconfigure the campus so we could have a bus drop-off there and not out in front of the school. That's one of the reasons. The whole campus works better if that building is gone. And I know, I looked at your plan when you brought it in, or after you talked to Andy, and your plan is actually more expensive than it is to tear that building down and put some modulators in there for the time being. And then eventually, when that campus gets totally converted to a junior high, you know, at the time when a bond does pass, and if some more permanent structures are built there, then that campus would be more suited for, as a junior high. And there are some structural issues with that building that Joel could, to clarify a little bit, also that you can't tell just by walking around, so with posts and things like that.
I went to a meeting about two months ago where-
You have about a minute, Gene.
Thank you very much. The other people had like twenty, thirty minutes. I hope you let me speak for a little bit. Joel, in a meeting two or three months ago, three times during the meeting, said he was not qualified to be giving you the budget that he'd been asked to perform by Andy. So here this budget, and in the same meeting, you say that you're not qualified to make these decisions, and yet you're saying that you know, and a man who says he's not qualified doesn't say that it's okay.
Gene, I'm sorry. Joel has never sat here and said he's not qualified. I'm sorry, Gene. I can't sit here and listen to that.
This is your problem and one reason that you're going to be gone, and unfortunately, along with you, a lot of other good employees in this district may go because of the practices that you too have been allowing to occur in this community. These are things, it's immoral, it's against the ORS, it's all kinds of things that have been going, and I have not brought them up, and I will. And I'll bring them up to the floor, and I'll bring them to the notice of the public. And I have not done any of that to date. I understand that there's something that did hit the state just recently, but it wasn't me. I didn't do it. I have strictly been proposing to you things that could work and things that would solve, and you do not look at them, you completely wipe it out like I'm some idiot. I'm not an idiot.
No, I know you're not an idiot.
I was the chairman of the high school relocation committee twice, and I was there for a reason. Why do you like to interrupt me so much?
Because I'm not trying to put you down. I'm not trying to cause an argument here. I'm just, you said that Joel sat here in a meeting and said he wasn't qualified. Well, that didn't happen, and I'm just trying to clarify that because you're making, you know, assumptions that are in public about our employees and-
I have kept my notes that I do very well. I take lots of notes. If you watch anybody take notes like me, there aren't many that do. And I wrote it in there, how he said, "I am not qualified," and I know other people commented to me after the fact, and so it isn't just Gene Pfeifer's opinion. And so we're still talking about a valuable asset. You're saying that you're willing to tear it down. You don't know crap about what it's going to be, and you're still willing to do that. These are our assets, they're not your assets. This is a school board that is to represent the district. The district twice voted about 57% that we should not be going forward with tearing down buildings, abandoning buildings, and do other things. Now you're proposing something that supposedly is going to be $2.5 million, and you don't know yet what it's going to be. The designers are just barely started on it. You don't even know what they're going to say, and they're damn expensive people out of Portland. You have not given it an opportunity.
Okay. Thank you, Gene.
No, I'd like to know if anybody else has something to say.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, thanks, Gene.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gene.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. Our first one, proposed revision to policy IIBGA, electronic communication systems. This is a second reading. Anything on this? Okay, our second discussion item, Eugene Field School site. This is a follow-up discussion to our March 16 joint meeting with the city council. Just an opportunity for us to discuss maybe what was discussed a little more. We haven't, as a board, had a chance to do that.
This is regarding giving the property to-
That was one of the things brought up, yeah.
I'll start out. I don't think it makes any sense. I follow what the mayor was saying. I think there's a couple of issues. One is that the district has changed quite a bit since the timeframe that he referenced about, I believe selling the high school property to the district for a dollar or something like that. Lots of change, the composition of the district has changed multiple times during that time. Much bigger area. Also, the way that was divvied up is really problematic for the district, but we're going to do anything with the rest of the site there. Any reuse of that site really needs to be the whole property and just not a piece of it.
Well, I agree. One of the mayor's major persuasive points was that the city had given the property initially, and it wouldn't be fair to basically have the taxpayers pay for it again. My first thought was, you know, we've got a huge proportion of our district that isn't in the city. We've got a consolidated unified school district, and that argument, to me, for that reason alone, wasn't persuasive. And then to Ali's point, I had the same thought, is to dispose of probably the most, well, the most usable and the most valuable portion of that property and retain the problem portion just wouldn't make sense to me without at least a lot more thought about how we're going to deal with the problem portion.
So next.
I would agree with those. Yeah. I agree with everything that's been said about this particular facet of the final disposition of Eugene Field property. I don't think it makes any sense at all for our school district, given the financial challenges that we have ahead of us, to be giving away any assets regardless of their history or regardless of who we give them to.
I think, I agree with that. In my opinion, I think it'd be a good idea for us to get an appraisal. We don't know what that property's worth. I think that'd be a starting point for us to order an appraisal for that and find out what it was worth and see what we can, get some ideas on what we can do with that site.
I think that we should wait to get an appraisal until the kids are actually out of there because things fluctuate so much in the market.
Okay. Well, I could tell you, conventional appraisal practices, it's going to be very difficult to appraise. I don't, I mean, I don't know what other method of valuation we have, but, you know, appraisal methods look at things like replacement cost, that's one method. Another method is to look at market comparables, which there aren't going to be. It's just going to be very, to me, it's going to be an appraisal that likely has a huge range of variation, but at least it would be some guidance. But I would be really interested to consult with, potentially to consult with some real active commercial realtors to, I think sometimes they have a better pulse on what buyers are looking for. So maybe something else we can do in addition or differently. But I would agree, getting evaluation would help us. I mean, somewhere along the line.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on the meeting?
No, I agree. I mean, we've kind of, you know, we're a unified school district now. We closed Monarch, sold it, spread the money out to the rest of the district. I mean, that's just kind of what we do now. And I can kind of understand that, you know, the idea of giving a portion of it away, even a portion, even just breaking it off and selling a portion of it or much less giving it, it's just, we need to do whatever's going to get the most amount of, you know, value for our district. So I just agree with everything that's been said here.
So I'm assuming we'll have a lot more discussion about this issue during work sessions and at other times in the future.
I would assume so, yes.
All right, maybe-
In the next coming years.
My suggestion would be, since we have such a full agenda, Mr. Chairman, to move forward and revisit this issue.
Thank you, David. Options to house full-day kindergarten at Eugene Field School begin September 2015. Andy, I'm going to throw it to you because I know you have a recommendation for us on the three different options that we had in our package.
Yeah, each of you received a copy of a two-page sheet that indicates three options which we've discussed at one or more board meetings specific to Eugene Field School. If you recall, and for the sake of the public, that Eugene, excuse me, that full-day kindergarten will be implemented across the district. You took action on that as a board, and with the exception of Eugene Field, we have every opportunity to provide that and accommodate that at all the remaining elementary schools in the district. Related to Eugene Field School, however, there's a need for three classrooms in order to provide adequate space for the school to handle and facilitate a full-day kindergarten. We've spoken about the option for the last couple of months or so of moving the basic skills class and functional skills classrooms out of Eugene Field, which is a district-wide program containing students from throughout the district, to one of the rural schools. We discussed consideration of Victor Point, Silvercrest, and Scotts Mills, and then after continued evaluation, found that Scotts Mills really is the most appropriate site from an access standpoint, and it has sufficient room in order to house those two programs. Over the course of the last month or month and a half, there was consideration given to, it was more of a supposition. We had a conversation about it at the last meeting about, I wonder, could we transition third graders from Eugene Field School a year early from the plan to discontinue use of Eugene Field? And would that be an option? So we had some conversation at the last meeting about it. We had some good input from you, some questions were asked of you, and so we've put together a proposal, excuse me, a summary that indicates, or that has summary information related to third-grade students being moved either all or partially to Eugene Field School a year early, beginning August of 2016. So I'm here this evening to give you my recommendation based upon the three options that have been shared with you. Option A, which is movement of the special needs programs, a district program at Eugene Field. Option B, which would be movement of the students to Eugene Field, excuse me, from Eugene Field, the third graders, to Robert Frost. And option C, which is to split, moving half the third-grade students from Eugene Field to Robert Frost. Spent quite a bit of time on this and heard quite a bit of input from others, spoke with it at the administrative level in the district, and also received some input from many of you. What I am here to share is that I believe the most appropriate option to address the needs of Eugene Field is the movement of the special needs and the functional skills classroom to Scotts Mills School. And let me share you my reasoning. First of all, just specific to the movement of third-grade students to Robert Frost, I can't recommend it at this time. I think there, you have many changes in effect in this district right now. Many of them are driven by statewide initiatives or agreement by this board to move ahead. One of those is specific to full-day kindergarten at all of our elementary schools. So we have, that's going to keep us busy, and that has kept us busy, and we have a plan that's in place for that and that will continue to keep us busy as we move through next year. I'm certain there'll be some bugs to work out. We have facility changes beginning. You've got the Slater project that you're working on. We're moving ahead with the Scotts Mills and the Butte Creek seismic rehabilitation upgrades. We've got curricular changes going on across the district. Again, I can believe we're managing these very well, but we just began our new statewide assessment, S-Back, that's being implemented at this time and full implementation of common court state standards. Again, specific to how we're keeping our days full. We have a new teacher and administrative evaluation system that's taking a lot of effort with all of our staff. And I think generally speaking, if I can make an overarching statement to this, is that your teacher, your administrator, and your director plates are very full right now. And to think that it's a reasonable option, in my mind, to move third graders from Eugene Field to Robert Frost this fall, I think is too much, and I think the timing is not right for that to occur. It could work. I think it has merit to it. I think it's an intriguing idea, a unique idea, and really from an instructional standpoint, putting third, fourth, and fifth graders together has quite a bit of merit as compared to the model that we currently have. I'm also concerned a little bit about a contingency plan. If we were to do this, having a backup plan for unexpected movements over the summer, those are honestly fairly predictable most of the time, but we have seen variations, especially at some of our larger schools, and this plan would fill up Robert Frost School. And so if we had students moving over the summertime, it would be very difficult to accommodate those. And finally, I know the value of the transfers that we have from other districts coming into Silver Falls District, and we would have to suspend transfers into Robert Frost School for at least one year, which has some immediate and, in my mind, some long-term impacts on the district enrollment as well. So with that said, I believe we also need to consider the impact on Eugene Field School. We're talking about a net gain of 70 additional students in that facility, an already stressed facility, and it has many concerns about its use with its current enrollment. So with that said, I think it's important that we work with the Eugene Field staff in addition to the resources that we'll be providing for the new kindergarten teachers and the support staff. I also believe there will be additional support needed at Eugene Field for managing the impact on food service, managing the impact on things like recess, especially concerned about drop-off and pickup at Eugene Field as we are right now, simply because it's such a unique circumstance there and is really out of the ordinary as compared to other schools in the district. I'd like to work with Jennifer Hannan, of course, in assessing the supports that we need specific to Eugene Field. But again, I believe that's manageable, and we could do it for one year, which is part of the plan as we move ahead with the conversion of the Slater Campus. Now, I think it's also important to note that when you're talking about movement, and we heard a little bit of a discussion already tonight, but movement of a special needs program to another school is to keep in mind the impact on Scotts Mills School as well. First of all, we've had the addition of district special needs programs in this district for many years, and the most recent I can think of is the structured learning program, district program moved to Butte Creek School. I can remember when I was principal at Mark Twain School, having expansion of the SLP there and the addition of the basic skills program to Mark Twain. And what Linda will tell you, and what I echo, is that over time, and I think as we look into the future related to special education, the complexity of our kids and the challenges related to best meeting their most appropriate educational needs is served by the multiple opportunities that we have for meeting their needs through our special education program. When many districts and others take a look at what we do in Silver Falls, we're cited as a model for how we best meet the needs of our special education students. So the basic skills program and the functional skills program at Eugene Field is worth every dime we put into it, and it serves the genuine needs of all of our students. With that said, you have a need for finding three classrooms at Eugene Field School in order to make full-day kindergarten work in that building. And when you consider that, these are district students, these students come from all schools in the district. They're not just from town, they're not just from the rural schools. The placement of those students, I think, can occur at any of our buildings that had adequate room with reasonable accommodations in order to make that occur. And in this case, I believe that moving the two programs to Scotts Mills School will work. We'll have to be certain that we work very closely with the principal, the new principal of Scotts Mills School, and being certain that we accommodate the needs of the special needs students out there. We have transportation that goes all over this district. We have special education buses running from just about the edge of our district on a daily basis from areas to many of our schools. And so I believe it really is a credible response to being able to best meet the needs of a full-day kindergarten. So I put that back to you to say my recommendation is not to move third graders to Robert Frost School, rather to utilize an option that's available to us right now, and one that was frankly the primary option that we considered as we fully understood the impact that we'd have on Eugene Field School to implement full-day kindergarten. Linda may be able to answer some more of the specific questions related to special needs, the requirement to be associated and have instruction with their peers and so forth better than I can, that's for sure, if you have any questions related to that.
I have a question. I think you're right in that we should move the kids to Robert Frost and that'd keep Eugene Field together, but I think there's a wide variety of special needs kids out there and what they need, and the idea that you're going to ship everybody to Scotts Mills- there and what they need, and the idea that you're going to ship everybody to Scotts Mills doesn't seem like the best answer either for special needs. Each one of those kids have different needs, some of them are more, you know, one-on-one, and other ones are more, need the social interaction from their group, from their peer where they live. You know, I think that there should be more of a medium solution in that, and that yes, I think a lot of it could be taken care of by moving them out to Scotts Mills, but you may also have the impact, as she was saying before, of the transportation. And, you know, what impact does that have on those kids? And, you know, how traumatizing is it to be in a bus for an hour and a half when you really, you know, your other peers are here 10 minutes away? I think there could be a little bit better solution depending on which kids need and their needs, and not just do the, you know, pumping and sending them all to one section.
Those are all very good points, Julie. If I can respond, Mr. Chair. We have students that come from as far away as the Falls, that area, many, many miles away, or many miles away in order to get the access to the services at Eugene Field School. And so, actually, having students placed at Scotts Mills will be closer for some students than it will be for others. And I believe it's about a 50-50 split, rural area versus town area that we currently have.
If it fits the kids' needs, that makes sense.
That's right. And each of those students have an individualized education plan, and there are individual decisions made based upon their needs. And the placement of those students is determined by the IEP team. The placement though is oftentimes regulated by the programs that we have available and the location of those programs in our school district. That's pretty common practice, actually, in most school districts, but in some cases, the best way to accommodate and to meet the needs of those students is by providing them the support within a basic skills or functional skills program like we have wherever it's located.
So, I have a question. So, do we have, now, we have a basic skills class out at Butte Creek already, right?
We do not.
We don't?
No.
It's an LRC.
That's only the Structured Learning Program.
Good, there we go.
Would it be helpful if I tell you a little bit about those programs?
Yeah. Well, mainly, where I'm getting at is where are they located? You know, if we're all, if they're all, if all those programs are one end of the district, and if you got a child from Central Howell, from another, I mean, the parents have a long way to go, the kid has a long bus ride. And I think definitely, facilities-wise, Andy has the best, that's the best solution. But it's the best long-term solution, you know, for that constant transportation issue, kind of like what Danette was talking about.
Yeah, so we have special education programs for kindergarten all the way up through age 21. Students in a learning, no. Students in a learning resource center have academic challenges, so they come and get some help with reading, math. And our learning resource center programs are available in every single one of our schools, and they will continue to be in every one of our schools. We have a program called the Functional Skills, and the darling kids in that class are kids that need one-to-one instruction. Their needs are so different from every other student that every moment we're in school, we're tailoring instruction to them. And so, that's our most involved group of kids. We have a program called Basic Skills. Those students have significant cognitive concerns, but those kids can learn in a group of two or three kids. And then, we have our Structured Learning Program, and that's a program for students with emotional or behavioral challenges. So, right now, at Eugene Field, we have the Functional Skills, we have the Basic Skills and LRC. So, the Functional Skills, the classroom that serves the most impacted students, and the Basic Skills would be out at Scotts Mills. And I really celebrate that very much. Scotts Mills is a wonderful school. It's physically a school that's going to be less stimulating, there's going to be less kids there, so a real plus, I think, for our Basic Skills kids and our Functional Skills kids is that it's a smaller, calmer program. And anybody's been at Eugene Field, no, it's a very busy, it's a very chaotic type of school. So, I'm hoping a smaller setting will be a calmer setting for our students to attend school. As far as the special services those kids would need, we look at the IEPs, I'll sign the speech therapist, OT, PT, nurse, all those services based on where the kids are. So, we would be pulling out nursing times and some other times out of in-town schools to support the kids at Scotts Mills. So, my first plan for making this transition would be to actually get my special ed team and the Scotts Mills team together. We can talk about what's great about special ed, what's great about Scotts Mills, and how can we come together to support these kids. And this isn't going to be just a one-year type of thing. This is going to be a relationship for a long time to come, because there's lots of other things going in the district. So, we'll do that. I'm going to have to move a few of the classrooms into different locations so it's easier with the busing, but again, that would be a conversation with special ed and Scotts Mills. And I think it could be a really great thing. You know, you talk about maybe the ambulance not getting there. Well, it's coming through Woodburn anyhow, and actually, we'd be a little bit closer to, we can provide transportation for each of our special needs students from their home to school, and we keep those routes as short as possible, but we can be a little bit creative with the time the kids are in school so we can really support them that way. So, I think it's, there's lots of changes, but I think we have awesome, great teams that will keep our focus on the kids and will make it work for them, so.
Is your thought this would be permanent or temporary?
Well, this is one right now, and then, you know, as we just shift kids and we get kids out of Eugene Field and looking at Mark Twain, you know, Andy and I have been thinking about what is a long-term, we don't want to move our kids all over the place, we want it to be a good, solid community supporting our kids.
And truthfully, Wally, the uniqueness is that our special needs programs are evolving. They're changing. We just had a good conversation this morning about the increasing number of mental health supports in our district that we haven't seen ever, I mean, compared to five years ago, and the adaptations that we're going to need to make over the next few years in able to best meet those students' needs, including from a therapeutic standpoint. We normally don't talk that way when you talk about public education, but that's the transition that's beginning to occur. We're seeing that within a number of schools, we're seeing that within the legal system, we're seeing that with the expectations based upon school districts in order to best meet the educational needs of students complemented by some therapeutic needs as well. So, when you think of that, it's a little hard to predict exactly where we're going to be five years down the road, but in terms of a Functional Skills and a Basic Skills classroom, that's not going away. I think we have to think in terms of at least a few years. Of course, it can be revisited. Tom, you bring up a good point, and especially as some of our additional facility needs get ironed out over the next couple of years. But bottom line for me is we have to find an appropriate placement for the Functional Skills and Basic Skills kids, because we have to have three classrooms at Eugene Field School in order to make it happen.
And one of the things I would plan on doing after we have that conversation with Scotts Mills and the special ed team is to meet with parents in IEP meetings, to talk about their individual student, and what would that look like in happening support. So, it's always going to go back to the individual student, and parents are going to have insight and share their concerns, and we'll address those as one meeting, one kid at a time.
And if you had a discussion with the parents at all yet regarding this proposal?
Well, I've actually been waiting for the board to decide what we're going to do with their third graders, and then just going to snowball other things that we need to do. So, once we have that decision, then we can start making those other plans.
Other discussion?
So, this is not a decision we're making tonight, we're just getting information.
It's not an action item.
I think it's something that we're going to need to talk about a lot, and probably a lot of questions will arise as.
The uniqueness is, and I understand, David, the uniqueness is that we're now in the second week of April, and we need to begin setting up transition plans for students and, of course, for buildings as well. I'd be curious to hear from the board if there are any other suggestions about how best to move ahead to be able to accommodate, again, the needs of Eugene Field kindergarten students in order to do this. We've really gone round and round with this and been discussing this option for the last couple of months as an option that we'd like to have given consideration. I'm going to encourage the board to give some clear direction tonight as best as you can relates to this, and I understand that there are additional questions. I think out of fairness, though, to the topic, to the conversation and the process, is that we need to move as quickly as possible in order to make this happen.
Yeah. I guess my thoughts on it, and Tom was up at Robert Frost the other day too, but I went up to Robert Frost, and I understand the need, you know, the issues at Eugene Field and how it might be beneficial to get some kids out of there, but I also was, being up at Robert Frost, they're using about, you know, all their space now. And I know they have a big sixth grade class, but they are using most of their space. And I guess I look on it as which option would be the least disruptive to the most amount of kids, is that the right way to say that? Which option would affect the least amount of kids and be the, you know, be less disruptive? And to me, it seems like to move the whole third grade up to Robert Frost would be fairly disruptive to Robert Frost, the programs up there, to, I mean, that's a lot of kids in one building. And that's just my thought that it, you know, and I know our staff would make it work, but it, I don't know, coming from my gut, it just doesn't seem real ideal. So, I guess I would support the move of the special ed kids to Scotts Mills and keeping the third graders at Eugene Field for one more year, and then moving all of them up to Robert Frost then, but that's just the way I'm leaning on it. But we could, if we thought about this for a couple of weeks and make a decision at our work session this month, is that?
If that's what the board would like to do, we can do that.
We could try.
Yes.
I really like it. I agree, it seems like the least disruptive solution for the district. I would like to hear what some of the thoughts and concerns from parents of some of these children.
Can you gather that information for us?
Yes. That's my thinking too. I would like to hear from the community of parents and families of special needs students that would be affected by this proposal. I think there's a lot that we need to understand as a board.
Let's make it a topic at our next work session. We'll discuss it, and I think we need to, if we can decide then, it'd be great, but no later than our regular session in May. That's probably getting a little late, isn't it? I would encourage us to give it some thought. Maybe we could, if we get some information from parents, maybe you could shoot us emails with that stuff and some of that, some of the other points, maybe we could do it by email from you guys and.
Do email, or would it be possible to invite some input if they wanted to speak during the work session? Normally, we don't, but we can make some exceptions just to get, keep the discussion going. If there's a good organizing group and they had a spokesperson or something.
That's a possibility, or Linda could summarize or see how.
Letters, emails.
Earlier information would be even better.
Yes, the sooner the better.
Sure.
Yeah, we do need to decide this as soon as we can, so. Okay, other items. Joel, I'm going to ask you to, could you come up and address some of the roofing issues from the district perspective, please? Oh, I missed one discussion item, I'm sorry. We'll hit that after Joel talks.
Good evening, thank you Chairman Roth and members of the board. Luckily, I was taking notes and going to try to cover as many topics as I can that were discussed earlier. First of all, I'd like to kind of talk about my philosophy on buildings in general, not just roofs, but the whole thing, and that is lifecycle cost. We've all bought something cheap today and replaced it in a couple of years, or sooner in our lives. I look at the long-term cost of our buildings, the long-term cost of roofing. One of my comments that I've made regularly, and I've expressed this with our superintendent, is the last thing I want to do in my career is put on the same roof again. I've never done that, I don't ever plan to do that. If you do it right the first time, put the right product on, it will be there when you retire, and that's my intention to be well past my retirement. So, with that said, I'll talk a little bit, I guess specifically, about the specification that's been a hot topic, if you will. It's a 113-page document. Majority of it is legal lease around the OARs and ORSs, about public contracting, rules and regulations. There's, of course, a pretty good-sized section in there about this specifications for the material. The specifications are written on standards, not on name of a company, not on a specific material. They are open for anybody to compete with, any manufacturer. In this particular instance, we ended up with seven bids on this project. All seven of those companies chose to bid, chose to pick the same supplier for their materials. Those companies are installation companies. They install a lot of people's roofing materials. At least one of them, and I believe more than one, are authorized Taylor metal installers. They very easily could have asked to have that material approved. I know there's at least one other manufacturer out there that builds a metal panel that is nearly identical to the Garland product that seems to be in question. The big difference is the warranty. They have a 20-year warranty. Once again, back to lifecycle costs. So, the specifications spell out the warranty. It's buried in 113 pages. It's not by design to make it hard to find, it's by design to cover all the bases of the laws around public procurement of things like this. The warranty specifications in here are 30-year, what's called a no-dollar limit warranty. So, as the cost of the product goes up 20 years down the road, when things need to happen, if they need to happen, doesn't matter what it costs, it'll happen. It's not, you know, you spent $1,000 on it there, we're only going to pay $1,000. This specific warranty, well, let me see here, going through my notes.
Sorry, Joel, did you say 20-year or 30-year?
30-year.
It is 30-year.
Yeah, yes, 30-year requirement on the metal roofing, which is.
On the material.
Yeah, yes. And jumping around here a little, the comments came up several times about public dollars and local economies and keeping the dollars local, and I'm a believer in that. ORSs and the laws do not allow you to do a whole lot of that in public bidding. There are some waitings you can do for out-of-state companies, but the word "local," according to ORSs, really applies to Oregon, and you can't do much waiting, you can't do any waiting with Oregon companies. You can choose to do some waiting with outside states if those states allow extra points, if you will, for local bidders, then we could do the same thing. Kind of a complicated thing, the ORS book, I don't know if, or Public Procurement Manual, I don't know if any of you have seen it, but it is several hundred pages. It's rather complex. So, talk about the warranty a little bit of the material, well, I guess finish up on this public dollars, public dollars and local dollars thing. One of the companies that bid this project is a locally-owned company. The owner of the company has students in our district. That company is authorized to install numerous manufacturers of roofing. They bid this exact product. They were not the winning bidder, they were not the low bid, I should say, on this project by any means. So, there were locals that were qualified, and there were locals that bid according to this manual. There's very clear timelines in here, as Owen mentioned earlier and was brought up other times, very clear timelines on when protests have to be made, when substitution requests have to be made. All of those things are spelled out in this manual. This project was advertised in the Daily Journal of Commerce in January. Clear directions in there were given on how to come up with this manual, getting it from me. It was posted on our website. It was very available to anybody that wanted it and wanted to take the time to read it. 113 pages might sound out of line. That's very common on projects this size, very common to have a manual of that thick. Talk about warranty a little bit, just to clarify a couple of things. This basic spec, if you will, I've been using for about nine years. I've been in this business for 15, never had any problems with it. I've put on roofs with this specification numerous times and had complete success with it. The company that's in question here, Garland Roofing, has been in the business for over 100 years. This material has been being manufactured for close to 50 years, is my understanding. I don't know exactly when they started making this exact material. The warranty is actually a little different than what we had taught, the discussion I had heard up here. Our warranty, the district's warranty, is with the manufacturer from the. Our warranty, the district's warranty, is with the manufacturer from the first day. We don't hold a warranty with the installer at all. And I'll explain to you why I like that idea. Installers seem to go in and out of business a lot more frequently than manufacturers. Happens all the time. And the other piece of it is, if you have a warranty with an installer, it's typically for, you know, depending on what you're putting on, roofing or windows or whatever, maybe two years, maybe five years. And then the rest of your warranty is a materials warranty that might go for 15 or 30 or whatever, you know, the material, whatever the product is. This warranty doesn't care why the problem came up. If it was an installation issue, if it's a material issue, whatever it is, it's covered with the warranty. You don't go back to the installer. It eliminates a lot of finger pointing. We've, I've ran into this, I'm sure we've ran into it as a district. You get eight years into a product, the installation warranty has, ran its course and is gone, you've got a material warranty, material supplier says, "Well, it was installed wrong," and the installer says, "Our warranty is up." And we're stuck with no warranty. That happens. That happens more frequently than you would guess out there in the world where you have an installation and a materials warranty separated like that. This takes it out of their hands.
Does Garland then inspect the installation? It's confusing to me how they would warranty somebody else's work.
So Garland, well, I shouldn't, so the specification requirements, so anybody can do this, but the requirements in the spec are that there's a factory-authorized representative on the roof at least weekly, makes reports to the district, photographs, and verifies the work being done throughout the project. That's for our protection, obviously, but any manufacturer out there, including Taylor Metals, have mentioned that they would be on, you know, inspecting the product. Any manufacturer that's gonna stand behind their product is gonna wanna be there and make sure it was put in correctly. That's the key to all these different products out there, whether it's a vinyl roof or metal or anything else, is installation, without a doubt. That makes or breaks the project. So, yeah, so the specification requires that they're on the project at least weekly and inspect, spec going through the thing for whoever applies, you know, supplies the Covering some other topics here. This spec, as you've mentioned earlier, has been ran through our attorneys, through our legal counsel, and we got the letter from them explaining that everything in there was perfectly above board and open. The process for substitutions isn't as simple as just throwing your name in the hat by design. We want to make sure we get a product that lasts for well beyond my career and well beyond all of your careers. If it's too easy and everybody qualifies, we aren't gonna get that. There are other districts out there who have adopted this spec as their spec and all but adopted the company as their company. I'm not quite sure how they've done that through the public procurement, but it's almost like they've, when we assign an agent of record for our insurance or attorney or doctor of record, some districts have gone to that level in this state, and we haven't. We've left it open so that other people can bid this without specifying a name brand. Any questions so far? Kind of running out of bullets here that we talked about earlier.
Questions?
I understand the difference between a warranty for installation and a warranty for product. And I understand that you had a bidding process in which you had seven competitors for installation. But my concern is that...
But I can assure you, it's not four times the cost. That is simply false. Now, as far as a company of record, we have not specified a company. The installers that chose to bid this project all chose to buy their material from the same supplier. They had the opportunity, very well spelled out in here, how to bid a different product if they wanted to. They had every opportunity to do that. The timelines were set forth in this very clearly, not only how to do that, but when to do it. There were also timelines set forth for if they didn't like this bid spec to begin with, how to protest the entire document. Also, how to protest the letter of intent that went out after the bidding process, after we'd compiled all the bids and had a low bid selected. There was a letter of intent sent to all of the people who had came to the bid walk, which was a bigger number than we got just bids on. There were people that came to a mandatory pre-bid walk. There was ample opportunity after that by the, in accordance with all the ORSs, for them to protest that decision. No one did it. No one.
Joel, do you have either know or have an opinion as to why all seven of the folks that bid, all seven of the installers that bid chose the Garland product rather than submitting a substitution?
They were all authorized to install it, and they didn't have to go through a process for substitution based on the spec. They were already authorized to it. The other piece is, to be honest, is the warranty. There may be others out there offering a 30-year, no-dollar-limit leak-proof warranty. Most of them don't. Most of them are 20 on all roofing materials. One, I hope I answered that question.
Yeah, you did.
Go one step further, one other thing, just for clarification to the board and really to the public as well. Some statements were made about what roofing we were replacing and what buildings and why. And just to clarify, because that isn't something everybody's aware of. The section of Victor Point is a built-up roof on the seventh and eighth-grade wing on the south end of the building. I believe it's the original roof from when that wing was added, and I believe that was in the, do you know when that was built? Seventies, eighties, maybe? It's pretty old. It's a modified, or it's not a modified, it's a built-up roof. It is leaking. The insulation, we've core-drilled it and sampled it, testing for asbestos and things like this, and the insulation under that roof is wet. It's leaking. That piece, if you remember, a year ago, we had a bid spec identical to this, except for there was no metal involved. It was a built-up roof at Victor Point. We broke that job into two pieces for budgetary reasons, and last year decided not to do this piece that we're doing this year. So this is the second time we've bid out that little chunk of the building. It's 20% of the building at most. It is a built-up roof, not a vinyl material, as earlier was stated. Move on to Mark Twain. The area we're doing is over the band and choir room, an incredibly small section of the building. It is also a built-up roof. The date and origin of that roof, I don't know. It's incredibly old, incredible bad shape. There's no doubt whether we need to do that now or not. All you have to do is walk into that band and choir room and look at all the stains on the walls and the ceilings and the floor from the leaks. It is incredibly bad. We've core-sampled that roof as well, and it is soaked underneath that roof. It is a built-up roof. It's once again not a vinyl membrane roof, very small section. The high school roof, the area that we're working on there was part of the original Phase 1 roof. It is also a built-up roofing system. And when I say built-up roofing, I guess to explain that a little bit, rolled material, hot tar, what you see, you know, pretty commonly on industrial or commercial buildings like this. Anyway, that roof at the high school, we are putting a coating on it, and I guess the best way to describe that would be, it's kind of like sealing your deck, or when you see companies seal their parking lots, you know, businesses seal their parking lots. They don't go in and rip up the parking lot because it's looking rough and starting to get water into it, they reseal it. And that's what we're doing there. There are some minor repairs we're doing there, some very small areas that are gonna be cut open and redone on it. The metal roofing that seems to be the driver of this conversation is going on the two buildings at the bus barn. The office area and the shop area, if you will, of the bus barn has a vinyl roof on it that is going to stay in place. It's in good condition and performing well. This is the two buildings where they park the buses on, further to the south of the office area. That's where the metal is going, so.
So Joel, I completely agree with your philosophy of, you know, do it once, do it right, and get your value out of it. Like I said, my red flag is just, there's just one product. So the 135-page document you got there, who prepared that, where'd that come from?
As you mentioned earlier, it was prepared with assistance. This is something I've used for years. The bulk of it, the legal lease, comes from the state of Oregon. It's a boilerplate template. The language around the bid specification, I have reached out and had assistance from Garland Roofing, from a factory representative from Garland, yes. And as you mentioned earlier, that is completely acceptable under the state statutes.
Yeah. And then it's also been mentioned that all the installers chose Garland, and they're certified to install Garland. Do you think that if they chose another material, they might be biting the hand that feeds them and lose their certification? Do they feel maybe compelled to only choose? You know, if I'm certified to work on John Deere, isn't it, and I go choose to work on the neighbor's Masi Ferguson, do you think John Deere might be upset with me because they trained me?
Yeah.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's kind of, they're to me, it's just, this thing is just full of red flags.
The, no, sorry. So the manufacturers, or the installers all did specify Garland, they are all authorized.
Yes.
All of them are authorized to install other materials, too.
Yes.
So, you know, they aren't buying and selling John Deere's. They're selling Case and New Holland and International Harvest. So they might be biting one hand, but, you know, there's a lot of hands. They're trying to make a lot of manufacturers happy.
Sure. I have no doubt that Garland has a great product, and if this goes on, this is gonna be a great roof. What I'm hearing from other people commenting and people I call is that there's people saying, "We can meet these specs, we can put roofs on that'll last just as long, we can have warranties that'll last just as long, and we can do it for less money, and we can do it with local product."
Yes.
That's what I hear, and when I see a process that doesn't allow us to easily explore those, I get really, really nervous.
And I guess my response to that is, there was a process in place for us to explore those. None of those manufacturers or installers in question chose to do it. One of the other questions that's popping in my brain here is the cost of the warranty has been brought up, cost of inspections during that process, and the cost to keep that warranty. The inspections that are done during the installation process cost us nothing. The manufacturer from this company, the manufacturer does that, cover their own tail. They wanna make sure it's put in right. There are re-inspections throughout the life of the roof to keep the warranty valid. There is no cost to any of those re-inspections. It's a zero cost. The other piece is the consulting, if you will, or the help in building these specifications was at no cost to the district. We didn't pay anyone to write their own spec. Anybody can bid this if they have a product that meets the spec.
Why would he volunteer to write the specs for nothing if he wasn't assuming he was gonna get the product?
I could go out and get 20 different manufacturers to help me write a spec.
I want a spec that allows many manufacturers.
And this does.
You mentioned you've used this for years. Have you had other jobs where an alternate supplier submitted?
Yes. One time, this was about eight or nine years ago, a supplier submitted their material, met the spec absolutely, their warranty was 20 years. They refused to rewrite their warranty. So they were not allowed to bid the project.
Okay, so there's like material out there, just without the warranty?
Yes. Absolutely. From 30 feet away, you can't tell the difference.
Joel, if we went out, it's been mentioned, going out for rebids on this, what does the cost of the project go up because we're looking at summertime work? And are people getting their ducks in a row for summertime work already?
That's a kind of a trick question, I guess, or kind of a, I'm gonna give you a mixed answer for that.
That's fine.
There on that. If we go out to rebid with a specification that requires this quality of roof and this long of a warranty, we will pay more for it at this time of the year. That's why it was bid out in January. If we go out with a specification that lets everybody that's ever sold a chunk of roofing bid, we'll probably get lower bids. We'll be having this discussion again when that roof does fail.
Yeah.
That's my opinion. So I have done that before. This is a previous district I worked at, we bid this exact spec for a metal roof on a gymnasium. Got a little late in the year, kind of a last-minute deal. The bid came in significantly above our estimated budget. We canceled the bids. We rebid the exact same roof in January, February, the following year, same spec, same everything, different date. And what started out at about a $270,000 roof on the first bid came in at about $230,000. So, timing is, does affect, your bid spec is going to affect it, too. I mean, you know, without a doubt. So, mixed bag.
Okay.
The pole barns out there at the bus barn that we're talking about, they're pole barns, correct, wood posts?
Yeah, it could be described as pole barned, yeah.
I was just wondering if there's any evaluation of what the anticipated lifespan of those buildings is from today out?
You know, there's been no formal evaluation, if you will. I've looked them over, and they've been there for quite a while. They seem to be in great condition as far as structurally goes. They aren't, you know, there's no sagging in the roof structure, no apparent settling in the foundations around those posts and the back walls and things like that. They appear to be in good condition. Need some upkeep, you know, and maintained, as with anything. This roof is part of that. A section of the roof on the further south building, right by the softball field, actually blew off in the last windstorm and the big windstorm we had here a few weeks ago and things. So, things like that are, it's done. I mean, the roof that's on there is without a doubt at the end of its life, and will start affecting the long-term survivability of the buildings if we don't do something, for sure.
Other questions for Joel? Okay, thank you very much, Joel.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up. We had one other discussion item that I went out of order on. This is a revision to our 2015-16 district school year calendar. It's just a proposed adjustment to the early release days. All it does is move the early release day in December and March to different times of the year because of the vacation times that we always have those months anyway and the amount of time that kids are in their seats. So I think, Linda, it just makes some of the early releases two weeks apart instead of three, basically?
It essentially gives us the opportunity to front-load some of that time for teachers as they meet together, grade-level teams, to do some of their planning early on in the year. They'll be able to draft their professional goals and some of their student learning goals based upon student achievement data together early in the year. Essentially, what it does is it gives us five, those two-hour early-release blocks for teachers to be in teams prior to parent conferences. So it really gives us the ability to front-load both some professional development and some training opportunities, but then some data analysis and some teamwork, all prior to the first time they sit down with parents. And then it doesn't give us any early releases during the month of December, which is completely reasonable.
Okay. Discussion on this, it's an action item later tonight. Okay, administrator and staff reports. Andy, update on Schleter Campus Project?
Each of you received a two-page copy of Schleter Campus Conversion Project progress update. It's an update to the summary that you received last month as well. I wanted to make sure that I highlighted a few things on there because I think it addresses some questions that you've heard from the public a little bit tonight, and also addresses, I think, some questions specific that some of you have had about where we are and the status of that. So just beginning, you can see that we have a number of items that have been completed. So, just beginning, you can see that we have a number of items that have been completed. Of course, beginning with our architect, initial coordination meeting with the district. We've had site visits by specialists on the, at the Schleter campus with our architect and with Joel. We've had a preliminary scope meeting with the city, talk about the possible off-site improvements and onsite requirements, and we have begun the traffic, city, excuse me, had a conversation with the city traffic engineer and have begun the traffic impact analysis. Some of you, if you're driving by the Eugene Field School, you may have seen some folks out there in orange vests the other day doing a traffic count. It's my understanding that the intersections that are part of the traffic impact analysis will have cameras or some sorts of devices to record the traffic flow at those intersections this week at some point in time. You have, the estimated completion is by May 8th with information specific to the architect that will give indication from the city, the estimated impact that the district would be required to upgrade. Again, those are all initial estimates based upon that traffic impact. And as you know, and as you've discussed about in the past, the traffic impact analysis is, is one of the big, is one of the big costs in this project. And so I think it's very important that we get that, get that figure, at least that estimated figure as soon as possible. Otherwise, as we move through April, you'll see that there are preliminary architect findings that, that we will receive here very soon, and those will all be shared with you on the April 27th. That's one of your work session topics already later this month, is to have your preliminary conceptual information specifically from Dan Hess of DOWA, and to take into account that the information that he has specific to the traffic impact analysis at that point. We also have on the 27th, a representative of Columbia Bank coming to speak with you about loan funding options. The funding for this, this project by a loan, you need to have some conversation about that and to have some specific information about what that looks like and the number of years of debt service related to that. If you take a look at the second page, we also have some reference to meeting with modular building manufacturers. And as you know, doing this project, that that cost is going to require modular construction. There's really no way around it. And in order to facilitate that, we need space to put it, similar to what Mr. Pfeiffer was referring to tonight. And I generally understand that, the concern's about an older structure like the old egg shop and industrial art shop, in order for you to accommodate that campus, to convert it into a middle school campus and have sufficient room in order for it to be a middle school, house, community roots, charter school, and continue to be a high school athletic facility, you have to have the room to do it. And the cost, as Tim referred to, of demolition and installing modulators is going to be considerably less than, than the cost of converting that old egg shop into, into a number of classrooms. You'll see as we move into May, cost information for off-site work, modular classrooms, and again, moving into later May, you will have at your May 11th meeting, a contract specific for the demolition of the former Ag and Industrial Arts Building on the Schleter Campus. Also, by the 15th, review of cost information and prioritization of scopes of work, including budget estimates for all project costs, including permits and design fees. Also put a reference in there to a meeting with Mark Twain and Robert Frost staff to discuss the preliminary concept and seek their input. I think that's an important step along the way as well. My sense is it'll be more than one meeting, but we're going to need some input with them for final scope and programming work specific to the Schleter Campus. And then finally, for you, final scope produced, and then moving on to step two of the project, which would be the transition and the construction as we move into the 2015-16 school year. So that's a quick update for you, and with the happen to answer any questions at this point. I am looking forward to hearing from our architect at your next meeting. I think that will be a very informative meeting for all of you, and especially to get additional detailed information about how we're moving ahead with this plan.
Questions for Andy?
So by the 27th, we should have a fairly good idea of the costs, is that correct?
That's my understanding from the architect. We may not have the full traffic impact analysis cost, but we should have a sense by then, but preliminary cost figures will be available by the architect.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, financial review.
You both are, you all have the two-page financial summary report sent out to you. The first page, operating statement for the general fund. You'll note that we have about 79.7, almost 80% of our revenue has come in to date on the income side, and our expenditure side is running at just over 50%, so that's positive for our cash flow. You'll also note that the current taxes have been coming in at a little higher clip than traditionally, so that's probably good for our economy, or is a reflection of our economy. Second page is our fund balances report. It shows all of the different funds. And then the third page, of course, is the general fund by school, which lists out the carryover, the funds that are subject to carryover and the funds that are not subject to carryover. So, if anybody had any questions on any of those, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions?
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Destin, Central Howl. Prattam, Title One.
These are summary results from a survey that all rich first.
Thank you.
Should I insist on a five-minute timeline?
I can start the clock and use my little lights.
All right, so I am here talking about Title One. I gave you some information about Title One in October. The news about Title One is that our schools have been working very hard to implement their school-wide plans, and also, the state of Oregon is requiring all Title One schools to submit their plans online. And all of our six Title One schools worked very hard through a number of meetings and a lot of time to do that. And so now, it's just a matter of revising those plans year after year and making sure that they're implementing what they have in their documents, but that's a big hoop to jump through for our schools, and they've done a great job of that. A little bit of bad news, next year, we're on tap to get about $45,000 less as a school district from the federal government. Now, when you, when you spread that over six schools, it's not going to be a humongous impact because there'll still be $720,000 coming in federal Title One funds. So it's a little bit of a hit, but it is a decrease when we've been going up a little bit each year in the recent past. For our strategic vision plan, my portion relates to 100% of teachers will meet or exceed the district standard for student engagement, and Lynda Myers has the overall oversight for that entire goal, but my portion comes under student enthusiasm, interest thinking, and problem solving. And so we put together a survey for all of our fourth through 12th grade students. We sent it to all of them, and we received back 1,752 responses. And you, those are the summary results you have in front of you right now, a variety of questions. And we're getting some feedback on how can we reword the questions to be a little more clear. An example, a positive example of, is on the final question of the survey, I tried to, we tried to get the students to tell us what made their best teacher they ever had so good at teaching, but it kind of turned into, who was my favorite teacher? But, the positive out of that was, we had an overwhelming number of positive comments from fourth graders through 12th graders about their favorite teachers, what they liked about them. And it wasn't about how they followed the curriculum, it wasn't about how they, what instructional strategies they used, it was mostly about relationships, how they treated them, how they made them feel. And it was all this relational comments. It wasn't about the specifics of and mechanics of teaching, which was kind of nice to see. And so, these results have been given to each principal, and then their task, following along with our strategic plan, is to share the school-specific results with their staff and have a discussion about what those results means for their particular school. And so they should accomplish that before the end of this school year to help them with any decision-making for next school year. Any questions about that? Okay, Central Howl, I have the pleasure of working at two wonderful schools, and fortunately, they're only three miles apart, so I can go back and forth as needed very easily. Both school staffs work very hard to meet the needs of the students that they serve each day. Central Howl is at 173 kindergarten through eighth grade students, and our attendance, 11 students still have as of March 20th, just the Friday before, or Friday of spring break, 11 students have perfect attend, perfect attendance. 122 students have 95% or better attendance, and 150 students have 90% or better attendance. So we still have a segment of students at the end that we're working on. Some kids just have had unfortunate long-term illnesses, stuff like that happens. We still are fighting the vacations. We don't, because we don't really have a neighborhood around either one of our schools, a large neighborhood, we don't have the kid that'll just skip school. That just, I mean, that just really doesn't happen out there. It doesn't happen at, I don't think, many of our K-8 schools. It's just, it's not part of the deal. Unlike, I would think that that would be more likely in a Salem Kaiser middle school than certainly one of our schools. So our attendance is pretty good at Central Howl. Students love the filtered water that the parent club provided, and they are drinking that more and more. Our library collection is being added to our software that was purchased last summer. All the books from L to Z have been entered into the system so far. We have after-school band, and that is going very well. They performed at our Christmas and Spring Program, and Mr. Duffy goes on and on about how advanced our beginning band students are. So that's great. We're about, we've been running the Oregon Trail from Independence, Missouri since October, and we're about 200 miles away from the end of the trail in Oregon. Again, we sent our bullying survey at both schools, trying to find out if kids are having problems. It gives them a great anonymous way of reporting if they're having problems. We have a new 30 laptop mobile lab at Central Howl that is very well-used. It's constantly out of the office, always going to this classroom, that classroom. Teachers are finding creative ways to use the laptops, and that is the way that we are going to accomplish smarter balance assessment at Central Howl. And it's very fortunate to have that lab. We are very fortunate, the SHS allows us to have our programs in our wonderful auditorium. We've had a jam-packed house for both of our programs this year, and we hope to keep doing that. Grandparents' Day is a big deal at Central Howl, and that will be April 30th, if you can make it, April 30th. And Prattam School. Our annual pancake breakfast is this Saturday, the 18th, starts at 7:00 in the morning, and there are food tickets, raffle tickets, and auction tickets for sale. And there are some great prizes, and you can walk away with a full stomach and your arms full of prizes. And you do not have to be present to win, so you can still buy those tickets. We have 73 students, first through eighth grade at Prattam, and September 2nd through March 20th, attendance, two students have perfect attendance at Prattam School. 85% of our students have, 95% or better attendance, and 100% of our students have 90% or better attendance. So we're doing a little bit better at Prattam, about half as many students, but we're doing a little bit better on our attendance. Basketball had a very successful boy season, only lost two games this season, and they were both in Victor Point. Our girls had a rebuilding season. Titus Roth qualified for the state Geography B, that's the National Geographic Geography B, and he went to that competition. He did not move past that point, but he still qualified. And our sixth through eighth grade OBOPB team this last weekend at Chomekada made it to the Great Eight. So there were 18 teams across the state, sixth through eighth grade, and they made it to the final eight, and they missed a couple of questions in their Great Eight round, otherwise they would have advanced to the semifinals. We have wonderful veteran classified and licensed staff at both schools. They're really good schools to be at. All of our Silver Falls schools are great schools to be at, but it's, it's a, it's a privilege to be at both those schools, and I think the teachers and the staff would tell you the same thing. Question?
You mentioned the bullying survey. What kind of information have you learned?
Again, we ask each year, have you ever seen anyone bully? And then we ask for those names. Have you bullied anyone? And we have, we have a number of kids each year. I probably get, I don't know, three or four names, and then I just kind of start investigating and calling the kids in, and I'll say, hey, in the survey information, it says here that some other students are picking on you, what's going on? And in those schools, the kids will tell you. Because there's, it's not like some beginner city situation, they'll just tell you, and then you can go as far as you need to, and talking to those kids or talking to the parents, and it works out really well.
So you've seen improvements?
Yeah, I think so. And because we've done it several years in a row, and this will be the first year at Prattam, it gets at some information because we don't always see everything, but it gives them a way of letting grownups know. Any other questions?
Just a glance at these, your engagement survey, it's a pretty, pretty neat result, it looks like to me. Most of the, most of the responses are, agree completely or mostly agree.
Yeah.
You know, a little more in the middle at the high school, which is to be expected.
And those are...
But that's, that's really encouraging. I mean, I didn't read all the questions.
And Eugene Field is nowhere in those survey results because they don't have fourth through 12th grade, so...
Yeah, that's neat to see. Thank you, Destin.
All right, thank you.
Nancy, Mark Twain.
Okay, so when I volunteered to swap with Mark, I wasn't sick yet, so if I start coughing, I'm sorry. So I tried to write out a bunch of stuff because I wasn't sure how long my voice was going to last. So I think what I'll do is I'll just start out with some celebrations for Mark Twain. On April 1st, our Teacher of the Year put together, he asked me beforehand, can I, can I do a prank on the school? Can we do a school-wide Mark Twain April Fools joke? And so, it went really well, and the kids really loved it. What it was, was we set up that Google satellite was going to do a flyover, and so they were doing a competition for all schools. And so we actually had all the AGs come out, and they spelled Silverton, Oregon, and we actually have pictures, but I wasn't able to get that for this night, but it will be up on the website, and so it's on our Mark Twain website if you want to see it. So it was just something fun that the kids, of course, said, oh, we knew it was a prank, but the way they were cheering and having a good time, they were just covering up. We had our service learning day recently, and you can see on the second page that we got some pictures. We went to SACAA, the Oregon Gardens, the Senior Center, Silver Falls State Park, the Robert Frost Garden, and Canyon View Equestrian, and we have some quotes from some of the people there, along with comments and compliments that were heard, overheard on the bus from some of the staff members. And so there was a lot of work, you know, with SACAA in their kitchen, and a lot of cleanup at the Falls, and at the botanical part of the Oregon Gardens, not the resort part. And also at the Senior Center, and then KJ said, oh, we could use some help here. So, I went over and helped her as well. And then on the very back page, I got a write-up from our robotics coach. We had a great turnout this year. I actually went down and watched the competition, so it was a great, great rookie year. So she talked about the all-day qualifying tournament at OSU, and our kids didn't go on, but it was their first year, and their robot worked. So, that's an important step too for them. And they learned a lot about teamwork and, and competing and working together. Our leadership organized all of our assemblies, we've had several this year. Just recently, we had an assembly to honor Daniel Jamza, the middle school teacher of the year, and also we did one with our honors students and those who had 95% or better. We did a competition with our AGs, and the winning AG for attendance also had the winning AG for GPA. So it was a really nice way to tie that in during the assembly, to talk about how important attendance is. attendance is. On the back page of this, we've got Shanna Chandler's Advanced Art Class. They're now on the Art Sonya website, so I would encourage you to go take a look at that. They submit a lot of their work and it's online and parents can order things, you know, prints or mugs or anything like that if they would like to see more of their students' artwork, so something else to check out. And then Mr. Gupp tells US History Class is working on the Bill of Rights right now and he's also our video tech teacher. So I wanted to just show something that they are doing in there.
Hello and welcome to the 10 o'clock news from K2 News Center. I'm Sydney and this is my partner Haley. Today, we are taking a break from our usually negative news and we decided to talk about the First Amendment. Let's go now to Haley. So Haley, what are you going to share with us today?
So viewers, I'm here to inform you on what this amendment really is and what it is really about. The First Amendment states that we have the ability to meet, speak, practice, and practice our religions without the government interfering. This means that we can speak for ourselves and to meet with others whenever we need to. For example, the Cornell College states that the First Amendment of the United States of the Constitution protects the right to the freedom of religion, freedom of expression from government interference. Freedom of expression consists of the rights to freedom of speech, press, assembly, and to petition of the government of redress and grievances and the implied rights of association and belief. The Supreme Court interprets the extent of protection afforded to these rights. The First Amendment has been interpreted by the court as applying to the entire federal government and even though it is only easily accessible to Congress. This means that we have the ability to be a Christian or any other religion without being punished. So basically, we meet with friends, family, and many other things without getting hurt or punished. So Sydney, what's the first section you're going to share with us? My section happens to be on some Supreme Court cases fought over this amendment and first includes the Tinker case. That sounds interesting. One First Amendment Supreme Court case that was fought over was about Tinker versus Des Moines Independent, Independent School in 1969. The issue was dealing with freedom of speech at school and the bottom of this whole court case was that you have the right to express yourself, up to a point, in December 1965.
Actually stop it there, it keeps going by. So he actually has a green screen in his classroom for his video tech class and he allows them to pick their backgrounds and they write their own scripts and they go through and practice and then record it. So it's an example of how our students are using engagement more in their classrooms.
So you're not contagious, right?
Staying back here, that's it. I don't have a fever, so, there you go. So anyway...
That's really good stuff. I'm happy to see that.
And this is the first year he's done it, so, sorry. It's really been neat to see that. I'm not going to be able to do much more. So if you want to look on here...
We can read it.
Read it. The engagement part pacing is very difficult to track for the district, so what I did was I just looked at the beginning of your self-assessment for our teachers on engagement and how they rated themselves mid-year, so it was just interesting. Look at that. I think I'm going to be done now.
We won't even ask any questions.
And I think Mark owes me big time.
Time for chicken soup.
We can email you questions. Thank you, Nancy.
Please do.
Feel better.
Thank you. I'm going to go home now.
Thank you, Nancy. Thanks for being here.
Okay, any board reports tonight? Correspondence?
I've just had the opportunity to go to the FFA convention and spend some time there and that was really cool to see all the, all the students from all over the state there. I got to judge some competitions and, and the, one thing I thought was very noticeable is, is all the students, the place was packed and they were very respectful of our, of our grounds, our building and it was a good showing for Silverton. We had a lot of volunteers there, it was a really great event.
Yeah, I would agree. I made it to one of the sessions.
Yep, that was a Friday too. It was good.
Anything else? Correspondence? I don't think we have any...
You've received everything that I've received.
Yeah, okay. Second audience of visitors, would anyone like to address the board? Yes, Sheri. One of our retirees.
I'm Sheri Dean and I'm a teacher at Robert Frost School and I've been teaching here for more than a couple of years. And one of the things that happens and has happened over and over again is change. And I think the whole thing with the 3rd grade is just another change that we have to deal with. And so as soon as you get change, you get reactions from everybody. When we heard about it, Robert Frost reacted, Eugene Field reacts, I'm sure Scott Mills reacts. And my only concern, when I listened to the proposal and when I listened to what you said, my only concern is that you said you were going to go back to the parents and see how the parents felt about this. And I think that that's really important, but with change, I can almost tell you what the parents are going to say.
Yeah.
I mean, I think all of us can. And so I would just caution you or ask you to please pay close attention to the input that you've gotten from Eugene Field and that you're getting from Robert Frost and that you don't base your decision on just those parent comments because we've taken a lot of time at our school to talk about the changes and how that can affect us and it's, it's all about what's best for kids and we just, whatever decision is made needs to be what's best for kids, not just based on some parents' input, so anyways.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for your years of service to this district, Mrs. Dean. By the way, she's retiring this year, by the way. Anybody else? Okay, we have some action items tonight. First one, approve Arrow Roofing and Sheet Metal of Portland as contractor for roofing replacement projects at Victor Point, Mark Twain, Bus Barn, and Roof Coating Project Phase 1 portion of Silverton High School in the amount of $348,100 pending approval of the 2015-2016 district budget. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
It's been moved, is there a second? No second? Okay. So I guess it lies there then?
That's, that's correct. Motion dies for lack of a second.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Correct.
Okay. Our second action item, approve revised 2015-16 district school year calendar. Is there a motion?
Move for approval?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, letter C, approve 2015 through 2020 charter agreement renewal and lease agreement between Silver Falls School District and Community Roots Charter School.
Move for approval? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, that one passes. Approve 2015 through 2020 charter agreement renewal and lease agreement between Silver Falls School District and Bethany Charter School.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that also passes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know we have representatives from both Bethany Charter School and Community Roots Charter School in the audience tonight and I, and I just want to extend a very quick appreciation, amount of appreciation to them for their help in renewing this. I think it's a value statement for you as a school board for how we value the charter schools and all of our schools in our district, so I look forward to another great five years with those two charter schools in our district.
Yes, thank you, you guys. Okay, we're going to move out of, take a...
Before we adjourn, I think we need to come up with a plan. At least directed the administration come up with a plan for reaction regarding this roofing project. We've got some important work that needs to be done and we need some next steps.
What would you guys like to do?
I've been in contact with some roofing consultants and I think maybe they, they might like to see some more documents to see what they can come up with, to meet Joel Standards, see whether there's solutions they can come up with.
So your proposal would be that we develop a new process and...
I think so.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
I'm, I'm good with that.
I think it might be appropriate to consider a motion to cancel the bid for good cause based on the fact it's in the public interest. I think it's undeniable that Garland participated and it appears that their specifications give them a competitive advantage that the rest of the suppliers don't have. So I think it might be prudent for us to cancel the intent bid with instructions to revise the bid document to, in such a way as to remove that competitive advantage.
Owen, would that, that remove the risk of us being sued for possible bid shopping?
Well, I think it would certainly help. I think if we come up with, you know, based on the testimony tonight, based on the testimony that, and the input that we've had from other people in advance of the meeting, it seems to me that we could make the determination that we've found good cause, that's in the public interest to, to do that.
So can you put that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I'll put that in the form of a motion. I, I would move that we cancel the existing intent bid under OAR 137-049-270 for good cause because to do so is in the public interest. Specifically, we find that Garland participated in consulting with the district to craft anti-competitive specifications and procedures to gain a competitive advantage for Garland.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, we can discuss it.
Oh, yeah. Owen, I know you know that language way better than I do, but I'm a little bit hesitant to, I think we're kind of digging a deeper hole here. I would like just some more time to talk with Joel. What Joel, what I heard Joel say was very convincing, other than the other testimonies we heard, so, but I'm a little bit confused about the whole deal. I just wonder if there's somehow we can delay and discuss it at our next board session.
Yeah, I agree with you. I was really assuaged and convinced quite a bit by what Joel had to say. I guess the, the conflict in my own mind comes from the fact that Garland seems to be the only company every time and I can't get away from, from that.
Well, but that's because of the warranty.
Well, in part, you know, I, I talked to some other bidders as well, you know, myself at the bid and I read the letters and, and things and that may be in part the case, but what I understood more so from, from my, my perception on it, is that the way the specifications are, they're so onerous, try and do something different, that that maybe is the real barrier, not so much the actual substance. I couldn't swear to that, but that's my take on it.
I just don't like the language in there of the intent because, I mean, I'm 100% convinced it's not Joel's intent to sway that process.
No, the, the thought here in, in the language that I read to you there in the motion was that, that Garland participated, as Tom points out, they're able to do, but they can't participate to the extent that they, that they obtain a competitive advantage by doing so. So in a way, they, the, the public policy there is that they participate in a way that's neutral. And I guess that's where I'm looking at the weight of the evidence of all of the, all of the, you know, every time Garland comes out a winner with these specifications, that's what makes me think that the, that the process or the specs probably isn't neutral entirely. And I guess what I'd like to see happen would be that we start that over with some more neutral specs, still the same substance of what we're trying to get in terms of the quality of roof, but it seems to me that those specs and the process could be revised to make it more competitive.
Mr. Chairman, if I can interject anything?
Yes.
I, this is, this is a unique circumstance for this school board and for this district, there's no doubt about it. And I, I think there are some potential legal implications here that our school district attorney is not present in this room with us. There's no obligation for this board to take action on this tonight. It was a proposed action based upon the, the process used and, and upon the need for us to replace those roofs, so there's no requirement that we take any action one way or the other tonight. I'm going to advise the board and suggest that you, you allow the, the original motion to die and, and consider withdrawing the current motion, allowing me to seek some additional input from your legal counsel about how best to address this matter. We're talking about one portion of this project and we're talking about four different structures. I, I think we can discuss options for potentially moving ahead with the other roofing projects, considering a separate bid option potentially for the metal, the metal procurement, but I don't know. And I think we're moving into some pretty risky territory if this board takes action to do anything other than just let this lie until you get some legal counsel.
I like that idea.
That's a point well taken, particularly with regard to the, the rest of the project. We may have options available to us where we could just focus out, slice off a piece of this and go on with the rest, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, based on that consideration, I would withdraw my motion.
And maybe Andy, you could do some research on it and let us know if it works, next works.
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. We're going to move out of regular session and go into executive session under ORS 192660 for sick leave bank request and personnel records. Thank you.